Michael, we are.
Okay, alright.
We are, we are live and broad recording, so you can begin that your, when you wish.
Alright, I'm gonna call this meeting to order for Design Review Board Special Meeting Friday, August 21st, 2020. I'll remind everyone, board members and everyone else that we are live and online and recording, so everything you say is public record, so. And in fact, Ms. Teresa's gonna confirm that. Are we in compliance with the Freedom of Information Act?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we are.
Thank you. Alright, we have a new member today. Welcome, Judd. We're going to get Judd Carstens sworn in here. I'm gonna introduce Stephen Ryan, the staff attorney who will do the swearing in.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, thank you. This is Stephen Ryan from the town of Hilton Head. Mr. Carstens, can you hear me? And are you ready to take the oath of office?
Nope, I don't think we have.
Judd, you must be muted. We can't hear you. Judd, I still can't hear you.
Chris, he might not know how to unmute his computer.
We're just calling Judd at the top right now.
Mr. Carstens, are you able to hear me, sir?
Judd, can you hear us? One minute. Stephen, he's signaling one minute.
Standing by.
Mr. Carstens, on your screen at the bottom in the center, it might be a blue circle with what looks like a microphone with a slash through it. If you can click on that, that might activate your microphone.
If everybody will just wait a minute, we're gonna try to get ahold of Judd by the phone. Okay, Judd's going to be calling in and using his phone.
He's on.
And we have him now. Judd, are you on? Can you hear us?
Oh, he dropped.
Well, I thought he was on, but he dropped. Judd's going to be using his phone for audio and just looking at the, the video on his computer. Give us a minute while he calls in. Is that him?
Yes. Yes.
Judd, are you there? Great, you can hear us. Can we hear you? Can you say something?
Say something.
Yes.
Yeah, there you go.
I swear, I've used BlueJeans before and my, my computer's just giving, giving me fits, so I'm just gonna be talking through my phone and I'll, I'll be ready.
Perfect. Mr. Ryan, if you would begin the oath of office, thank you.
Absolutely. Mr. Carstens, please repeat after me. I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I am duly qualified.
That I am duly qualified.
According to the Constitution of this state.
According to the Constitution of this state.
To exercise the duties of the office to which I have been appointed.
To exercise the duties of the office to which I have been appointed.
And that I will, to the best of my ability.
And that I will, to the best of my ability.
Discharge the duties thereof.
Discharge the duties thereof.
And preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution of this state and of the United States.
And to preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution of this state and the United States.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Thank you very much, sir, and thank you for your service of the town.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ryan. Alright, welcome, Judd. Okay, Ms. Teresa, will you do roll call, please?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Ms. Lippert? Ms. Lippert?
I'm here.
Thank you. Mr. McAllister?
Here.
Ms. Remke?
Here.
Mr. Maluski?
Here.
Mr. Carstens?
Here.
Mr. Gentiman?
Here.
And Ms. Boss is excused.
Okay, thank you very much. We'll go to approval of agenda. Does staff have any changes to the agenda?
No, sir, not this time.
Alright, thank you. May I have a, and this is an open, open floor for motions today. No one is assigned to do motions today unless, unless specifically asked. So could I have a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll motion.
I'll second.
Okay, so we have a first and a second motion, first and second to approve the agenda. If you have any changes to the agenda, state them when you're called upon by Teresa. Otherwise, vote yes or no to approve the agenda. So Teresa, would you please do roll?
Ms. Lippert?
Yes.
Mr. McAllister?
Yes.
Ms. Remke?
Yes.
Mr. Maluski?
Yes.
Mr. Carstens?
Yes.
Mr. Gentiman?
Yes. Alright, so the agenda has been approved. We'll move on to approval of minutes from the special meeting of July 24th, 2020. I hope everyone's had a chance to review those and may I have a motion to approve the minutes of the July 24th meeting?
I'll make a motion to approve the July 24th meeting amendment as committed.
Okay, got a motion from Mr. McAllister. Do we have a second?
Second.
And we have a second. Board members, again, please vote yes or no on the approval as Teresa calls roll.
Ms. Lippert?
Yes.
Mr. McAllister?
Yeah.
Ms. Remke?
Yes.
Mr. Maluski?
Yes.
Mr. Carstens?
Yes.
Mr. Gentiman?
Yes. Alright, next we have citizen comments. Chris, were there any citizen comments to be added?
No, sir. Public comments concerning the agenda items were to be submitted electronically via the town's open town hall portal. The portal closed at noon yesterday, and there were no comments of record. Citizens were provided the option to sign up for this public meeting to comment and participate by phone. The public comment period closed at noon yesterday, and there were no requests from citizens to participate by phone.
Alright, thank you very much, Chris. So we will move on to new business. We have new development conceptual for Mount Calvary Baptist Church, DRB 001487 2020. I'll turn it over to Chris.
We are getting, just a quick note, we are experiencing some feedback from Annette and Judd. Would you all just make sure that your computers are muted? And John, John, would you make sure, we're getting some feedback from you. I don't know if you're on the phone or just through the computer, just double checking things, but we'll move on.
So Chris, I'm on the phone. Computer is muted.
Okay, okay.
You want me to mute my phone whenever I'm not speaking?
If you don't mind, if that's not too much trouble. Okay, Mount Calvary Baptist Church, the applicant is seeking to construct a new church building next to the existing church building and expand the associated parking lot. The existing church building will be converted to the parishous fellowship hall. The new church building will be a pre-manufactured metal building with wood stud walls finished in stucco and cement lapboard siding to match the existing church. The roof will be constructed of sand, standing seam metal roofing panels. The site will also serve as an overflow parking lot for the restaurants across the street during peak hours. The parking lot surface will be mostly constructed of pervious parking. Staff recommends conceptual approval and request the comment sheet be added to the notice of action. So you all should see on your screen the site outlined in red. Gumtree is down in the lower left-hand corner of the screen, can just see the edge of it with the traffic circle, and then Squire Pope running diagonally, and the back gate entrance to Hilton Head Plantation is in the upper right-hand corner. Of interest to, to the north of the site, on the same side of Squire Pope is the fire station. The restaurant dockside is directly across the street from the site, and you can see that large parking lot. And I would remind you that a couple months ago, the DRB approved the demolition of that front building for the boat storage, dry storage, and reconstruction in that area. Does, if everybody, if there's anybody that doesn't know where they, where we are, would you please let me know? Seeing none, I'm gonna move on. This is the existing church. And there's pulling back a little bit further, a side view of that, well, angle shot, and then we'll get a full side view here. This is the, the side on the fire station. You're looking where the site of the new church would be, directly in front of you. There is the fire station. A, the proposed floor plan for the church, the new church building. The existing church building is, would be directly south of this plan. A roof plan. Elevations for the new church. And this is the existing church building on the right-hand side. Again, rear and side elevations. This would be the side facing the existing building. Sections through the new church building. Porch and drop-off, covered drop-off column sections. Wall sections. And the illustration of the church. And the site plan. I think it's important to note in staff's comments of concern, the pedestrian circulation is not well-developed in this parking lot, and that's a concern because there will be, it will be used for overflow parking for the restaurant. So I, I think the issue is, how are they gonna get across the street? Where can we channelize this so that they're not just walking, you know, everywhere across the street, and it becomes a, a safety issue? Again, under staff comments, under miscellaneous comments, given the stormwater detention can take up 20% of the site, the proposed detention area appears inadequate to accommodate the proposed development. That, an increase in that detention would directly impact the site plan, so that's of concern. The proposed parking lot grading does not accommodate the preservations of, preservation of trees. This site is fairly heavily treed, and there should be more, more done to accommodate some existing trees on this site. And we'd be looking during final, it's gonna have to come back for final, so you're voting for conceptual approval, but we'd be looking for specification and detail on the proposed pavement specifically because that is to be pervious. And that concludes staff's presentation.
Okay, thank you, Chris. Is the applicant present? I think I saw Tim on there somewhere.
Yeah, I'm here. Tim, Tim Brooks from Park Design Group Architects.
Alright, thanks. Welcome, Tim. Would you like to, you have a 10-minute rebuttal or add, or whatever you'd like to do?
I don't. I believe the civil engineer is also on his call. I don't know if he has anything to add.
Yeah, I'm, I'm here. This is Rhett Bullard with Carolina Engineering. Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, yeah. So more or less, the 20% issue, that, that pond area is designed to serve the church primarily by itself, and the parking lot, you know, the pave, obviously it'll cert, it'll store release water from the part, the paved portion of the parking area, or I guess the driveway. The parking lot itself will be gravel and be its own stormwater BNP in itself, so it will store release water subject to requirements to the stormwater manual. And, you know, we're, we're, I've done design calculations and it works, you know, I'll get with the, the town stormwater engineer, Brian Eber, and we will, we'll hash it out, but as far as I can tell, it, it is adequate because the gravel area is actually a, considered a storage area for the stormwater.
Okay, thank you.
And I guess, I guess, speaking to the trees, which trees, I mean, you know, we were more or less wanted to give you guys an idea of what we wanted to do, and before I went through the wringer of making a list of all the trees we're removing, just, you know, get an idea, I mean, which trees are you guys mostly concerned about, and, you know, we can take a look at trying to figure out a way to make that work. That's about all I got.
Chris, would you like to reply to that question?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's not, there aren't, staff has not identified specific trees that need to be preserved. The, the, the need is to preserve some of the existing trees, so identification of the healthiest trees falls to the applicant to identify those and protect them. And the only other thing I would add, with the understanding that the, if the parking lot is gravel, there will need to be some physical protection for those trees as well, meaning bollards, to keep cars off of them once they are protected.
I got you. Go ahead.
Yeah, go ahead. You, you still have time, sorry.
We'll be, we'll be glad to put some cross ties around it or something like that if, if you guys deem it necessary. We've looked into a couple options. We, we wanna put something that's, that works for everybody, so.
Alrighty. Anybody else on the applicant's side present who'd like to add anything? Alright, alright, great. Alright, so we'll go, we will go in order down the, down the board and offer comments, questions, so, and when the, to the applicant, if you're asked a question by one of the board members, just say, this is Tim replying, or this is Rhett replying, just so we have it on the record. So I'm gonna start with Mr. McAllister.
Alright. Yeah, overall, I think it's a nice conceptual package. I think the architecture looks great, and it's headed on the right track, in my opinion. I'll echo staff's comments. I'm, I'm in agreement with pretty much all of that. And with the trees, you know, I, I just think there's probably an opportunity to save a few more, you know, if you're maybe try to identify some clusters of oaks that, you know, you could put a, a tree aisle in there. You know, I just now kinda skimmed through to look at some, and, you know, I think it's just a general comment. I think there's probably some opportunities if you studied it. And as far as, I, I did have, I'll just throw this out there. I don't know if this comment really applies, but I don't know if you're gonna have, still have any buffers or not. I don't know what the adjacent zoning is, but if there is a buffer requirement specifically on the north side, I don't think the town's gonna allow you to grade in the buffer, so that may be something you just wanna prove. But other than that, I think it looks great, and it's heading on the right track.
Thank you. Chris, Chris, would you like to reply to the buffer comment?
Um.
Or is that something that would need, need to be researched?
It's a very good comment. I'd have to double-check the, the buffer requirement. I don't know that it, there wasn't, it didn't come up in the review, but I will double-check that.
This is, this is Rhett Bullard. According to the pre-con notes, or the pre-application notes, I guess, not pre-con, there is no buffer there on the north side because it's the town of Hilton Head's property.
Alright.
It, it won't, I think the uses, the uses are similar, so the buffer, the issue may be that the uses are similar, so the buffer's not there. Both institutional uses.
Yeah, if you wanna check over the pre-app notes we had from a while back, it, it's pretty detailed on what the buffers are.
Alright. Was that all, David?
Yeah, that was. And, you know, I was just throwing that out there, just, you know, like, like you guys have already said, based on the zoning and the use, you may not need one, but, you know, just point it out, just to be conscious of it, to save you some headache on the road.
Okay, thank you very much. We'll move on to Ms. Remke.
Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead, Debbie.
Okay, alright. I also had a question about the trees because there's a lot of oak trees and, and what we sometimes call heritage trees back there, but I think this will be addressed by the architect and the landscape designer, so I'm gonna move on just a minute. Chris, you had a, a comment about people using the overflow parking and then crossing the street. They do that now. They use that, that plot where the, where the church will be for overflow parking, and there's never really been an issue there. Are you just suggesting maybe paint a sidewalk area, crossing area in the road? Is that what you're after?
Staff's suggestion is, because this will be, become formalized parking, and the stated intent in the narrative is to use this as overflow parking for the restaurant, that there should be directed pedestrian paths to the restaurant, so that there's a, a crosswalk established on, on Squire Pope, and I would hope, or I would think that there should ought to be paths developed through the parking lot to get pedestrians out of vehicular traffic in the parking lot.
Okay, so it still sounds like you're thinking about painting something on the road. Is that correct?
It may include painting a crosswalk, but I would suggest that it's probably not limited to just painting a crosswalk on Squire Pope.
Okay, so when they get across Squire Pope, what do we have on the other side? I, I don't think there's a sidewalk there. Are they just free to, to go across to the boathouse parking lot then? Is that the idea?
Pedestrian, the pedestrian path beyond the site, this site is out of our, out of this project. All we can do is work with the project that we have in front of us, but that may very well be the case, but just because there's nothing over there, we still need to kinda organize it on this side, so that hopefully it will be at a later date organized on the other side.
Okay, alright. My only other question, in looking at the existing building, there's a chain-link fence behind the building. What's that area used for? Does anybody know? Architect?
Chris, can we look at that? I think it's a playground area.
That, that's what I think also. So I guess my question is, will that remain? Are we planning a new parking, I'm sorry, a new playground where the children will be safe?
No, it's not in the scope of this project.
Okay, alright, well.
Is there anything additional, Debbie?
No, I, I thought there was an answer coming, but that's, that's okay. I just, that was an observation.
Oh, Tim, Tim had replied. Tim, to the play, the playground, the chain-link question?
I am. Good, good morning. This is Pastor Simmons. Can, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, and in answer to your question, ma'am, that was a playground that we used when we actually housed a, a school facility on the campus, but we no longer do that. The school is no longer in operation. It's now closed, so that will be removed as a part of this project.
Okay, so there's really no fenced area for children then?
No, ma'am. No, ma'am.
Okay, alright, well, we're good with that, I guess. Okay, that's my only comments. Otherwise, I think this is a good project, looking forward, but it's a nice.
Excuse me. Pastor, could you please, could you state your full name and title for the record, please?
Yes, sir. My name is Deonie Simmons. That's D-E-O-N-I-A Simmons. I'm the senior pastor at the Mount Calvary Missionary Baptist Church.
Thank you, sir, very much for that and for your, for your reply.
Yes, sir.
Okay, I, I, I wanna respond to something that Debbie had asked, that there is a, a pedestrian, a bike path, a pedestrian bike path, asphalt on the other side, on the, on the boathouse side of that road. So there is something to connect to over there, unless it ends. I know it kinda jogs around the street there, but I'm pretty sure that's right there.
Okay, thank you for that, Michael.
Okay, let's see. Moving on to Mr. Molesky.
Yes, thanks. Yeah, I definitely agree with, with, with staff, with the, the parking tree and water retainerage concerns, pedestrian circulation. Great, great observation there. I wanted to ask if the parking is going to be gravel, how will you address, you know, the, the striping and the marking of the individual parking spots? And, you know, right now, the way that the parking is configured, at least looking at it in plan view, it doesn't appear to be that obvious as to what direction you need to go. And I see in the backside there, it looks like it's a one-way. Will there be arrows? Will there be signage? You know, when the gravel moves, will that disturb the, the structured parking? Or, no, structure isn't the right way, right word, but the markings?
This is Rhett Bullard. I'm gonna take that question on. The parking stalls are marked by the header curbs. And we've done this, you know, it's the same thing we've put in at, across the street on the chart house. Or the, it's the dock side now. It used to be the chart house. And more or less, the, the header curbs are what mark how you park. The, the gravel itself is part of the, part of the stormwater system, a BNP system. So the developer will be required to maintain that gravel parking area as part of, part of the, the, the site development. And, and that's indefinite. And, and one other thing I wanted to just mention real quick, when we designed the dock side across the street, the, there is a sidewalk running on the, I guess, north side of the parking stalls. We could extend through the gravel, or to the asphalt bike path. And it's just a real short run if the town's willing to let us add that as a simple change to that site. And that would interconnect the, the bike path and allow us to throw a crosswalk in. And I can get with the DOT and make that happen. It's no big deal, so.
Okay, and then to continue, thank you. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, John. If I could just follow up and interrupt for just a minute. Rhett, now understanding that you're going to use the parking lot, the gravel parking lot as storage, what happens on a Sunday when it rains and there's people coming to church?
Sorry, I muted myself. So if it rains, the gravel storage is set up to store water up to, you know, I think it's 10 inches deep right now within the gravel. And when it peaks out at the top of the gravel, it will flow into the pond into the outfall structure. So more or less, it, it, there will be drainage inlets around the site set at, you know, a minimum elevation which will, you know, be set up to allow the water to go from the parking lot to the inlets, but not before the gravel parking lot has the ability to store up to a certain volume. And, you know, the void space within the rock would be the storage volume. More or less, I, I hope that, that makes a little more sense. But it's not designed to flood whatsoever. And the infiltration rate of the soil is very good. The water table's about five or six feet down, according to the geotechnical engineers that went out and checked the site, so.
Thank you. Sorry, John, for interrupting.
No, that's, that's fine, that's fine. You know, another comment, you know, back to the, the parking of, for the folks that would be parked in that rearmost section of, of the parking lot there. Get perhaps through the median is an opportunity to put some type of walkway in there just to address staff's concern of getting all the, you know, the people from walking through the parking lot, which appears to be a pretty, pretty great distance, and at least keeping them in a, in a safe pathway. And then perhaps directing them all to a central point, so everybody's crossing Squire Pope at the same place instead of, you know, randomly crossing would be one suggestion there. The, the setback of the building, I guess this is maybe more of a question for Tim here. I'm assuming there's probably a lot of gathering that occurs both before and after the service. There, there's a pretty render, color rendering here that shows a nice live oak tree in, I don't know, 30, 40 plus feet of, you know, that's the one there. In, in the front there, I'm, I'm assuming you guys already looked into that, making sure there's enough of a, of a space there for gathering, so people aren't necessarily getting too close to the street, it appears. That kind of already been addressed?
Yeah, we looked at that. It's, it's a decent amount, set past in the street.
And I really like how the architecture, how you mimic that gable on the new one to, to match the existing, so the buildings, you know, relate to one another. Are there any improvements to the existing building? I mean, this picture here makes the, makes them look like they're connected there with almost like a white lap siding connector, but I guess that's not really the case. But is, are there any improvements to the existing building that are?
No, this was, yeah, that, that was before we really got into the design of it. There, there's a couple of things that changed. On this one, we also have asphalt roofing and, you know, in our design, we're gonna have metal roofing, so that got taken out just because of the separation between the two buildings. So we really just have a walkway. There, there is no improvements planned for that building as of right now.
Yeah, thank you. Those were my, those were my comments. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, John. And, alright, so first ever for Judge, Judge Carson's, you're on.
Thank you, Michael. Appreciate it. I'll say, my background as a landscape architect, I obviously look at a lot of site things. I understand the no buffer requirement on the northern side. It looks like, since it's not indicated, it's probably gonna be a C buffer along that, along that southern portion. So that'll be important. Obviously, that'll help with the retention of some of the trees. I'll echo the comments on the parking and the gravel, especially from Mr. Molesky. Rhett, you mentioned the header curb, so that'll be a flush header curb?
No, those are the standard header curbs that are basically concrete wheel stops. Sorry, I guess that's better.
Okay, so, and so we don't necessarily need the wheel stops as across the street with the, with, with dock side. Yeah, you know, when it comes to gravel lots, you know, sometimes it, it is hard for those circulation. So I'd encourage it's making it as simple as possible for that circulation once you start looking at the trees. Knowing also that you're gonna be putting in curving, providing, you know, some space around those trees that are gonna be maintained, let alone meeting the LMO standards as far as the, the tree parking islands. Looking at just the use of the church and looking at the LMO, we may, and I do understand that we're trying to maximize parking, but we're, we're definitely excessive on parking by probably 30 spaces. So I think that can give some freedom in, in how you save some of the trees, because you are overparked when it, when it comes down to it. And then finally, I would say is, yeah, be careful of, with the tree removal. There will be, need to be some plant back between just confirming the, the ACI coverage, the property. And then the last thing, I'll, you know, with staff's comment as far as the circulation, I think if you satisfy pedestrian circulation getting to the front of the church or to the covered drop-off, I think it'll go a long way towards satisfying that circulation, getting people, you know, safely to a point to cross the street also. There is a crosswalk at the existing, in front of the existing church. So there is a marked crosswalk. I don't know if it's necessarily to have an additional one here, but there at least is that component in the area, and, and they are connected. But all in all, I, I do, also, I think Mr. Molesky mentioned, you know, that gathering space outside the church. I think that this covered drop-off side in that sidewalk will, will function also with that as people head to the parking lot. But all in all, I, I certainly appreciate the expansion and how it ties into the existing architecture and the treatment. But, yeah, I'll be very interested to just kind of see how y'all treat the, treat the lot and, and treat these buffers, just making sure that emphasize that native plant power. Thanks.
Thank you, Judge. Alright, and we will go to Ms. Slippert. Annette, you're on.
Thank you. I agree with all the comments that we've heard so far. And I also agree that I think the front facade has been detailed nicely. I do share the same concern about the setback of the building, both with the gathering, but also with how it fits into the neighborhood. The other buildings of that scale are set back further, because this is more the scale of the fire station or the dock side. It is significantly larger than the existing church. So I think just it's looking at in, in, with how the trees get preserved, whether there is an opportunity of it shifting back off of the street. I think that would fit into the neighborhood better because of its scale. I think that, again, how the front facade is detailed is very nice. The attention to the columns is very nice. And so I'm hoping that as details get developed further, there are sort of three little covered entry areas that, where I think that same level of detailing, especially at the southwestern corner of the building, would really help tie together as, as a completely cohesive design. The other aspect of that southwestern corner on that right side elevation, because it's only shown in the side elevation and not in the front elevation, there appears to be a service yard right at that front corner, which I think if that could get relocated further back, I think that would do a lot, especially if the building cannot push back, to not have that be so visible. I, I was glad to hear that, I was, because I was also unclear about the connector, no connector, because one drawing and the rendering seems to imply it. So it's good to hear that that is not something that is part of the project. I think keeping them disconnected does help. And other than that, I think it looks, it looks nice.
Okay, thank you, Annette. Alright, my turn. Yeah, all great comments. I agree with everything everyone said. The, the only, the only thing I would question regarding the setback that Annette had brought up is that this is the primary building, and the old church is now the secondary building. So having them in line, which is pretty much what they are being proposed to be, I'd be okay with that. If we were starting fresh with both buildings, I would say that we would, might wanna set them both back. But I'm okay with the way they've got them aligned. I think the green space out front is, is nice. I, I live in Hilton Head Plantation. I drive by there all the time. And, you know, on, on Sunday, early Sunday afternoons, there's usually people congregating out in that little front lawn area, and it seems like an adequate amount of space, what they have now. And this looks like it's making it even bigger. So, so I think if it's nicely landscaped and it, it, it does fit within that streetscape right there, even though across the street, the buildings are set farther back, I, I think that works for me. So that's the only, only thing I would say differently than anyone else has said. Staff had a comment about the overhangs, Tim. And when you look at the front elevation, the overhangs look truncated. But I want to point out to staff, Chris, that, that that's at the column and at the pilaster. And then, and Tim, correct me if I'm wrong, but when you get to the sanctuary part of the wall, that overhang is much deeper. Is that correct, Tim?
Yeah, that's correct. So, yeah, what you're looking at is the column. That's where the steel columns are gonna be for the metal structure. The actual building is gonna be further back, so it's flush on the inside.
What would you say that over, yeah, what would you say that overhang is, say, above the window?
We haven't got the steel yet, but it's probably gonna be, it's gonna be at least two foot six.
Yeah, so I, I think you're good. I, I would, I would take that comment out of the NOA, because I think they've, I, I think what they've done is architecturally appropriate with the style and how the columns and the cornices fit together. And then you can see they have it up there detail number two. There is a deeper overhang at, basically at where the windows occur. So, so I think, I think you're fine there. The, let's see, I had one other. Oh, the, Annette's comment on relocating the service yard, definitely a good comment. I would move that to the back of the building.
Yeah, we, we need that service yard there for the air conditioning unit. We have to have one up front. So originally, we had all the compressors in the back, but we need to have a compressor up front.
Can we make sure it's well screened?
Yeah, that's a compressor for the north end.
Okay.
It's too far around to have it with the rest of the compressors.
Okay. Can you make sure it's well screened and, and well landscaped?
Yeah, I mean, it is on the side. That's in between the churches, so not on the median side. I mean, it, it'll be well detailed. It'll be a louver detail, so it's not just gonna be, you know, fence.
Okay. So it's in between the buildings. But that fence, that fence looks a little short, I think. Looks like a six-foot tall person would look over. Yeah, I mean, could you make, can you bump that up a foot or something? It just?
Yeah, I mean, we could look at bumping up a foot. That's no.
Okay, alright. I think that would be better. And the only real comment I have on the architecture is if you get, you can see it in the perspective. If you go to the perspective. Drawing. The port cachet, the drop-off. You see how the, the, the perspective, please? Yeah, see how the, the porch in the front has the, has a nice cornice line that lines up with the church? And then the port cachet is a simpler, detailed design, which is fine, but it, it kind of breaks that cornice line. If it were farther back in the building, I think it would be a less intrusive. But being that it's front and prominent, is there a way to raise that port cachet, that extra two feet and keep that cornice line?
Because, you know, we were trying to break up the cornice, not having the exact detail. It's pretty formal. We're trying to make it more informal. Yeah, it's a pretty heavy cornice. That is, we really just wanted that as the front element, front entry element.
Annette, Annette, will you chime in? What do you, what do you think about that? Am I worried about nothing?
I actually like the fact that it's not aligned with the main structure. And relative to the rendering, the drawing actually seems to indicate that it's yet a little bit lower than rendering shows, which I think helps. So I like the fact that it's disaligned.
Okay, I'll buy that. So go scratch that, Tim. It was more of a discussion point. So does anyone have any second round comments? If you do, raise your hand. Okay, let's go. Oh, go ahead, John. Yeah.
I'll wait, Brad. I'll wait till after.
Oh, wait, yes. Sorry, Chris, you, you weren't, your name's not on my list here, so I often forget you. Let's let Chris go first.
I, I just kind of want to circle around back to the, the AC unit there to the right-hand side of the, of the building. Tim, could that be moved to, to the other side of that side door?
We didn't want to, could we go to the plan?
Yeah, to plan or to?
Uh, you can go to the plan.
Is that what you want?
The plan, plan, the architectural plan, not the site plan. One more, there you go. One more, there you go. We, we want to keep it out of that window of the sanctuary, the nave. That's why we have it there. So it's on a blank wall of the bathroom. We didn't want to put it into the window of the sanctuary. So that's why it's not further back and it's, it's right there. If we flip to the other side, you'd be looking at, we'd have to either eliminate that window or you'd be looking at it from the sanctuary, partial space.
Well, the, the, you don't have a window on the other side of the sanctuary in that location. So I'm wondering if that could be, either that window could be higher or, I don't know, made the graph last, could be frosted or something. It would just move that, move that yard back from the front of the building.
I mean, we have a window right there. We have a, you know, a huge window. You can see right on the other side of that covered walk from the sanctuary.
Right, I understand that. I guess my, my question is, there was, there, the window's right there, if you all can see my cursor, but there's not a window on the other side of the sanctuary.
We don't want to put on that side because that's the side from the parking lot that you'll see.
Okay.
So we want to keep it on the side between the buildings.
Okay, let me...
You'll be, you'll be entering from that building, so we wanted it, or that parking lot, so we wanted it on.
Okay, I understand, and I'm not suggesting moving it to the other side of the building. What I'm suggesting is, there's not a window to mirror the location, in the location, on the opposite side of the building. So is it necessary to have that window, that window, I'm sorry, cursor?
I know what you're saying. It's not necessary, but we would like as much light into that space as possible. The window is ruined on the other side because it's under a cover walk and that's where the audio is going to be, audio visual.
Okay.
We could take that window out, but again, we're trying to get as much light into that space as possible.
Well, it could be taken out or the bottom could be frosted or there could be some kind of treatment that would allow you to pull back that, that fence that's right there on the front elevation and pull it back to get it off of that. It, it's a suggestion.
Okay.
Anything else, Chris?
No, sir, thank you.
Okay. Okay, so we'll do second round again and, and, and Annette, I, I'd like your opinion on what they just discussed, but let's go to John first, because he raised his hand. Go ahead, John Molesky.
Well, I'm going to share my opinion. I, I agree with Chris on that comment for what it's worth. But anyway, I was going to ask, I noticed on the site plan, the, the trailer homes that are back in the corner there, is there any additional screening, whether it be landscaping or whatnot, that's going to address that both, for, for both parties' point of view? Whether it be the people that are parking in the parking lot to provide screening from, from one property to the next and then vice versa, just out of respect for the people in the trailer park, perhaps who once had a, a, a nice natural tree view and now all that's going to be removed and become a parking lot?
Right, do you want to address it? You want me to?
I, I, I guess, I guess my best answer to that is there's a buffer there. And, you know, when we get done figuring out how many trees we have to move from this, this project, we will be sure to load that buffer up. We're going to need places to put them anyways, and there's minimum requirement anyways. So they will have a pretty good, you know, wooded and brush buffer with nice plants.
Okay, but there'll be no physical fence there then?
That's not planned right now. I mean, we can look into that, but I, I, not, it's not planned right now.
And is there any kind of chain link fence or any existing?
I believe there is a chain link fence on, on some of it. I don't know, I can't remember.
Is that on the church's property or the trailer property?
Let me look real quick. At the survey. It looks like the chain link fence, there is one that's sort of in the rear. I guess it's chain link, yeah, yeah, it's a chain link fence. It's, it doesn't run down the entire side. It's just to the rear of the church on that property line. And it is on the other side of the property. Partially, it goes in and out, so.
So I don't know if Chris or anyone else could, could help me kind of, I guess I'm not that new anymore, but how that postures, because I've kind of always felt that we've tried to address the whole site and, and as opposed to just the front elevation and whatnot. I don't know if there's any concerns there.
John, I think that's a very good comment. Because it's, because it's existing, well, that, that's up to the, 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 that's up to you as the design review board. It's certainly within your purview to ask that that be addressed.
Okay, thank you.
John, what were you asking to be addressed?
Well, I just wasn't, wasn't clear, you know, again, I hadn't walked the back of the site to know if there was a fence there, so I'm told there's a chain link fence there. And I just didn't know if they're making all these significant improvements to the whole site. Does the, you know, property owner have any responsibility to, you know, if they're taking down all these trees that were once there and to provide some type of screening as, as was addressed with, with trees? But is there any type of fencing that's required there? Both just from a, you know, privacy, so people aren't cutting across the property, but also just from an aesthetic point of view? So the, the folks in the, in the trailers now are just staring at a gravel parking lot, which once had trees on it?
Okay, thanks for the comment. If, if someone, whoever ends up making the motion, will include the staff NOA comments. And then that might be a good one to add, to make sure there's proper screening. Because, of course, we haven't seen a landscape plan yet, so that'll need to be addressed. So we can't really comment on it until it's addressed. But that is a good comment to put in there for them to address, so. All right, thanks, John. And that, you had one more, you had raised your hand earlier?
Yeah, I mean, it, it was really about that service yard and just a thought. I understand the desire to keep daylight as much as possible, but that pier between the windows, just something to look at based on seeing the size of the service yard for one condenser. It may fit between those piers, but I, I really would like to see it not up at that front corner. Especially if it needs to get taller.
Okay, thank you. Tim, just consider that as you're going through this. I know the, Chris had brought up the, you know, there's no window on the opposite side, but that, that window would be under the port cachere. If there were a window there, right, there's that blank spot where the 12-foot, go back where you just were on that port cachere side.
That, that is correct. I mean, another thing about that inside, you know, we have a huge stand there because it's an AV stand.
Yeah, it makes...
Where there's a rhythm of windows. It feels like that window should be there.
Yeah. Yeah, sorry. I'm, I think I'm leaning mostly towards, you know, what Tim is proposed. Because obviously you would not put this under the port cachere. And if we move it to the right side of the door, it now becomes kind of a blocker, you know, looking out the, the other windows. From the congregation side, you'll see a, a service yard fence instead of, hopefully they green up that area between the two buildings. So I'm thinking that it's probably the lesser of the evils, having it right outside the bathrooms there, so. But, you know, re, look at it again, Tim, and we'll, we'll, we'll have, I assume, further discussions when you come back for final. So every, Debbie?
I wanted to capitalize on, on what you were saying. I agree with the architect of record. I think that service yard needs to remain there with a six-foot fence. And if it's painted the same color as the church, I don't think it's going to be all that noticeable. I certainly wouldn't want to see some film over that one window in the sanctuary. I think that would be very destructive to the interior of what's trying to be projected there. So I, I would vote to leave it where it is, just make sure that it's six foot, so nothing is visible from the street and it's painted the same color. I think it's going to kind of go into the background more than we're thinking about. Also, on to John Molesky's comment about the back end. I agree with some kind of vegetation. I don't agree with putting a fence up there because some of those people might be members of the congregation. And if we put a fence up, then they'll have to get in their cars and drive around through the, the, I guess they can get out of there before they get to the traffic circle. But, you know, let's, I mean, have access to that church if they want to go to that church. So no fence, just some shrubbery. And those are my two comments.
All right, thank you. Yeah, I agree, landscaping would be nicer than a fence, so. Any last, any last additions there? All right.
Michael?
Oh, who's talking? I'm sorry.
This is Judd.
Oh, Judd, go ahead.
Yeah, just going to piggyback on back of what Debbie and John have said. I think that service yard's fine. It will, you know, there'll be a landscape treatment. There, there looks like there's room between the sidewalk and that service yard. So that'll help mitigate that also, even if it is a low hedge. And then, you know, considering the, the adjacent development, a single family, there will be a C-type buffer between these uses. And if, you know, as far as if, when Tim and Brett bring this back, you know, it, it looks like it's going to be the 15-foot, which is the type two. And that's a, that's a heavier treatment. And that involves a solid wall or fence at least three feet high or a solid evergreen hedge. So there's going to be a, a bunch of plant material associated with that buffer, you know, between this development and the parking lot. And if there wants to be a coordination between the, the congregation and the pastor and this, and this, in this development adjacent, as far as if, if there are congregation members who come through, you know, that would probably just be a level of coordination, you know, helping to bring a point that makes everybody happy. But there will be substantial amount of plant material between these two developments.
Okay, great. Yeah, that helps. Honestly, I didn't know what happens specifically in a C-type buffer, so that, that helps me out. Anyone else? Would, would anyone like to make a motion? And again, I would ask that you include the NOA comments from staff in your motion and any other pertinent items that we have discussed. I'll leave it open. Could you raise your hand? Because I had a couple. Okay, Annette, please.
I'll make a motion for approval with conditions for conceptual DRB for DRB 001487-2020. The conditions being staff comments to be included minus the comments about the roof overhang. A, just a sort of reminder about if there are buffers that no grading can occur in those buffers. A, which partially is a reiteration of staff comments, the past pedestrian pathway circulation and how that is defined, that that be studied. It was stated that the chain link fence around the current playground will be removed as part of the project. It was also stated that no connector between the buildings will exist. That the gravel parking will have concrete wheel stops. That as far as the southern side, it looks like it will be a C buffer. To just be confirmed and then landscape plan to match that. The recommendation to save more trees to potentially use the option of the parking exemption to reduce quantity of parking spaces. That the circulation to the covered drop-off be studied. That screening to and from the trailer park as recommended with landscaping, or the C buffer will address that. That the minor entries columns have a similar level of detailing of the columns, that that be studied or at least some additional level of detailing. And that these yard compressor be looked at, a six-foot fence, same color as the building, and just review size and location. That is at least the totality of the items I wrote down. If anybody has any additions, please do so.
Yeah, okay, well, we have a motion. Is there any further discussion on the motion? It sounded like a pretty good list to me. All right, would anyone, do I have a second for Ms. Lippert's motion?
I'll second.
We have a second by Mr. McAllister. So you will be called on in order by Ms. Teresa, so please vote yes or no. Ms. Teresa?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ms. Lippert?
Yeah?
Mr. McAllister?
Yes.
Ms. Remke?
Yes.
Mr. Molesky?
Yes.
Mr. Karstens?
Yes.
Mr. Gentman?
Yes. So we have a unanimous conceptual approval and we look forward to seeing you all soon at final. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
All right, next we'll move on to Mitchellville lot 11, DRB 001500-2020. Chris?
The applicant is seeking to construct a 45-unit multi-family development of three buildings. All buildings will be podium-style with a concrete structure on the first floor and wood frame construction above. Ground level will be covered parking with four stories above. The main building will have 37 units and common amenity spaces. The two oceanfront buildings will have four units each. The ground-level parking will be screened with a slat wall at the perimeter and considerable foundation plantings. The roof will be metal and conceal mechanical units on the courtyard side. Site amenities include a pool deck, a pool, a pool deck with an amenity and bathroom building and beach access. The site has a large area of wetlands on the Mitchellville roadside of the property and several specimen trees on, on the rear of the property. Staff, this is for conceptual review and staff recommends conceptual approval and request the comment sheet be added to the NOA. On your screen, the site is outlined in red. The Atlantic Ocean is to your, to the north at the top corner, top right corner. Mitchellville Road is running sort of diagonally right here. You can see my cursor. The end of Beach City Road is off to the far right out here. Of, of interest or of note are new subdivisions in the area. There's a new subdivision recently approved within the last year, I believe, here, here, as well as here. If anybody doesn't know where we are, please raise your hand or speak out. Hearing and seeing none, I'll move on. Just some pictures of the site. You can see the trees on the site. The proposed site plan here. So here's, you see the main building, the pool, and then those, those two buildings out on the ocean side. Again, another, how the, the buffer might read. Staff's concern is, and it... Again, another, how the, the buffer might read. Staff's concern is, and it, it can't function, the, this buffer can't function between the fire lane and the building. A buffer is meant to be undisturbed vegetation, and the fire lane is meant, you're meant to have access to the building from the fire lane. So those are incompatible in the current location. The ground level plan. I think this is the first through four level plan. That's the first through four. Roof plan. Elevations of the building. And that's the front elevation. Perspectives. Of note in staff's comments are the, I brought it up earlier, the, the, the building that's separated from the fire lane by vegetated buffer, that's incompatible. And the other one that I would like to point out is the suggestion by staff that the stormwater detention be relocated from the ocean side to the front parking and on the other side of the parking. The thought there is that vegetation would be preserved between the building and the ocean. So in other words, here we are, this stormwater area detention pond be relocated to the other side of the parking lot out here. And that concludes staff's presentation.
Okay, thank you, Chris. Is the applicant present? And would you please identify yourself?
Okay, I think, can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Let me mute my phone. Just do it this way. Hi, guys. Steve Stowers with Architecture 101.
Steve? Anyone else present that will be speaking?
I'll be the only one speaking.
Okay. So you have, you have a 10-minute window here, Steve?
Okay. I just wanted to say, hang on, let me adjust my audio because I'm getting sound twice. I just wanted to say that, you know, we took very careful consideration with the building layout on this project. It's, it's, we started with a careful study of the significant and specimen trees on the site and laid out the building specifically to avoid as many of them as we, as we possibly can. The, the, the front of the site, you can sort of see it there in a slightly darker hatch pattern, is dominated by wetlands on the, I guess it would be the Mitchellville roadside. So the, the building itself will be, be very well screened from, from Mitchellville Road. And you'll really only see the, the main access drive as you, you pop into the, the project site. And then the, the building itself is, is fairly unique in that it's, it's got the two sort of outer buildings, which are private villa buildings, which will have private access to them. And they're, they're, they're the, the two oceanfront sort of, and they themselves are also designed so that they can be as delicate to the site and the, the existing heritage trees that are there and that are found. That we really want to focus as much as possible on preserving those trees with the project because it's, it's, they're such a, such an important asset for the project.
Anything else? And just be available if anyone has any questions for you. Let me go through. All right, hold on one second, please. Write something down. All right, then we will go through the board member comments. And again, if board members, if you have a question for Steve or a question for Chris, please identify who your question is for. And then responder, please identify who's responding. So we will start again with Mr. McAllister.
All right. Just since we're kind of talking about trees, I'll go ahead and hit on some of that. You know, I see that we're proposing to take away a few specimen trees. And I realize that some of those are declining or dead. One that did catch my eye was, I think there was one cluster, let's see, the, the 4D 24, 20, 12-inch live oak looks pretty healthy to me. So my only comment regarding the specimen trees is I would ask that you go ahead and get what, you know, however you need to get it resolved, if it's a BZA, or if you have to get some sort of variance. I would ask that you, you try to get that resolved before you come back for final. You know, if you get pushed back and you're not able to remove one, that would obviously have a significant impact on your, your site plan. And I'd hate for you to come back for final, get approval, and then get denied to remove one down the road and have to come back. So, you know, I'm not sure the process, maybe Chris can chime in, you know, if they can go ahead and try to seek approval for trying to remove the specimens before coming back to final. But I could just see that as being a significant component of this project. So I would ask that you get that resolved before come back for final. Chris beat me to it with the fire lane. I think you'll need to reevaluate that. I don't, don't think you can have the, the fire lane in the buffer like that. And I'm not sure what the proposed material is. But I think it, you know, regardless, it's, I don't think you're going to be able to do that in the buffer. Typically, on projects where we have bigger, bigger buildings with more mass like this, we have asked in the past that they upsize some of the trees to go a little above and beyond for the canopy trees. So when you do your landscape plan, I would ask that trees that are interior to the site be increased in size a little bit to help scale the building down and to mitigate for some of the significant trees that are coming down. So I would say at least a four-inch caliper tree. And let's see. Had a question about trash, or is it going to be handled internal to the building? Or is there going to be a dumpster enclosure? Has that been flushed out?
The trash has not been flushed out at this point. I think it's probably going to be served by a central dumpster. And I think that would, access to that would be off of the northwest end of the parking lot.
Okay. I would just ask that, you know, when you come back for final, we would want to see what that's going to look like and where that's going to be located. And along that, that thing, for the pool, I don't know if there's any thought about how the pool equipment's going to be housed. Is it going to be an underground vault? Or is there going to be a little pool equipment house or a screen yard? Just something else to think about for final. We want to know what that looks like and where it's going to be. I didn't see it located on the plan. So just something to keep in mind. Those are, those are my biggest site-related comments. And that's all I've got for this first round.
Thank you, David. Ms. Remke?
Excuse me. I think this is going to be a nice project. I, I think I'm correctly assuming this is not workforce housing. It's regular apartments, right?
That's right, Debbie. I think it's going to be condo, actually.
Okay, all right. I looked at the color boards. They look great. I like the colors, like the plan. I really don't have any comments. I'm, I'm pleased with the way this looks. And I look forward to your final submission. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Molesky?
Yes, thanks. Great comments, David. Thanks. Thanks for sharing that. I learned a lot listening to you guys. The patios, what is the proposed railing system? I see E-Pay maybe for the top rail. And I'm not really clear on what the horizontal element is that would be, you know, from the top rail down to the patio?
Are you talking about the stainless steel framing?
Is it, those are all going to be like, what, powder coated, or?
I, I was thinking that it would, it would be a metal or some sort of brushed aluminum or something like that.
Okay. And you have it running horizontal? I'm not sure that's?
We do have it horizontal.
I don't think that's permissible from a code point of view. It's just too easy to, someone to climb and hop on over. So for what that's worth, you could probably confirm that. And then along the, I guess, the first floor that would be concealing the parking there, those louvers, are those all just treated material? Or is that all going to be like a cementis product?
I think we're, we're still exploring the materiality of it. But I think the, what I would show right now is it will be a horizontal slatboard that will allow light to, to enter the garage through there. But it won't, light and air, and would visually screen it.
This is just, you know, perhaps an opinion to consider here with the scaling of things because it looks like you have the, again, I'll call it the first floor where the parking is with those louvers we just discussed. And then we have a repeated theme going up for the next four levels. I don't know if there's any consideration of maybe having the first livable space floor, perhaps that either tie in more to what you're doing on the base, just to kind of break it up, maybe, because I think all those louvers will probably end up being somewhat concealed by your foundation plantings. So I don't know how, and this is maybe more of an architectural question, definitely, by maybe pulling up that, the foundation colors, maybe to include that first finished floor, just so the building perhaps doesn't feel so tall would be one of suggestions there. And then I also wanted to ask, if you jump over to any of the site plans, would, would be, would be fine, or even just the, the building plan for that matter. Okay, that's cool right there. So, okay, so right there, you know, on the ocean side of the pool where the walkway is, are those two little buildings there, single-story buildings, are those little bathrooms slash changing areas? Or is that correct?
Yeah, that's the, that's our amenity building. And it will have the bathrooms and the, and has the shower. It may hold a food service where you, you could go get a drink. And it will also hold the pillow, the pool equipment.
So just my, my observation would be, it seems like if you're at pool level, that that kind of obstructs the, you know, the ocean view. And, you know, whether you could physically see the ocean when you're standing on the pool deck or not, you know, just, you know, the breeze and just the whole ambiance of being there. I don't know if there's any consideration to, to relocate that, just to, to open things up a little more for what that is worth.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea.
Anyway, those are, those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Mr. Karstens, you're up next.
All right, thank you. I agree. I think the, the treatment of the building as far as the, the mix of materials is nice. I will say that the, the large blank walls that, you know, obviously there's a number of windows and, but you can see on the, the main building and on the smaller buildings, there's, there's quite a large wall of continuous material. I don't know if there's a way of breaking that up so that it kind of melts with, with the rest of the façades. I know that it's kind of between the large building and the smaller buildings, but it does, it does occur on both sets. I echo Mr. McAllister's concerns about trash and dumpster enclosures. And it's good to hear that the pool equipment will be housed in that, in that pump house building. Site-wise, Steve, did, did y'all go through a pre-app with the town for this?
Yes, we did.
Okay. And the, and the concern wasn't raised about your density. In, in Mitchellville, I know it's, it's 12 for multifamily, it's 12 per acre, and that's a net acreage. And were there any calculations done on that wetland? Because the 12 DU's, it would, right now is calculating off the, the total property. So I, I would just like to understand from the town's perspective, making sure that they, that, that density is understood. That wasn't, that wasn't anything of issue with them, obviously.
I'll, I'll dig into that.
Yeah, no, and then, you know, that plays into, for me, looking at the buffers and setbacks, I think that the buffer, or the, excuse me, the setback on the, the western side is mislabeled. If, if this is going to be multifamily and it's, and it's a vacant Mitchellville lot next door, it needs to have a 25-foot setback. And then with the size of these buildings, even above flood, I think we're looking with the setback angle, I think we're looking at maybe another four to five feet of, you know, before you can get to that, that upper portion of, of the, the building structure. So there needs to be a consideration for that setback angle in placing these buildings out there. And then I, I agree with everyone as far as that fire lane. That, that obviously needs to be resolved outside of a buffer. And the parking seems to be appropriate, even though it, it looks pretty tight underneath the building footprint. But you got roughly a space and a half, a little more than space and a half per unit, which depending on how your unit breaks down, will, you'll end up having your parking loads. And then finally, no, wetland setbacks. You know, considering this is multifamily, I would double check strongly in the LMO, your, your wetland setbacks, especially on that ocean side with that one building. I know it is an average, but there is minimums. And then finally, with all the trees that are kept, especially the specimen trees, Rocky's going to be very aware of the 15-foot clear. And also just the, the, the percentage of canopy impact when it comes to impervious. So I just add those on your, on your radar.
Thanks so much. Appreciate it.
That it, Judd?
Yes, I'm sorry. Yes.
Okay. Great comments, all of them. And next, Ms. Lippert. Annette, you're on.
Yeah, I agree with all the comments that have been made. And it took off a number of my comments because they've already been addressed from the service yard. Where does Ash get taken care of? Service yard compactor. I also had the questions about the setback angle. So all of those have already been raised. I also really strongly agree with Mr. Molesky's comment about potentially bringing the baseline up a little bit to help the building feel not quite as tall. I also, I understand this is concept. So of course, we're going to see more details at final. I think the trim detailing, if that can take on a somewhat stronger low country sort of language, I think that would help a lot. And just as, as sort of in seeing some of the rendering for these views here, those of wireframe rendering, I'd like to have you study the poolside courtyard elevation as far as getting more detailing, particularly the top rendering in this view right here. Treatment of what happens with those windows, whether it's trim or shutters, or those façades with just? those façades with just the windows on them feel like they're, they could use a little more articulation. With regard to the entry as far as how one gets into the underground parking, I'm just wondering if there can be some more foundation planting to the, yeah, exactly on this view. I don't know if the stairs can shift to allow for some foundation planting to happen between the stair and the driveway, because I think that feeling just, it will really help soften that entry. If, if that was not all, you know, I don't know what the materials are, but let's say impervious and all of those conditions. Other comments I had, I know, again, I realize you're at concept, so just looking at the articulation pool building to have a similar language as the rest of the building. And while I realize you're trying to maximize as many units as you can, perhaps looking at a bit of variation passing, and I, I realize that two, four unit buildings do do some of that, and I appreciate that. That may be one of the more challenging comments to, to address, but if possible, something to look at again, because it is such a tall building. Chris, I had one question to you. Is this considered a four or a five story building as far as how the LMO sees this?
It would be four stories over parking. The, I think Judd had a, a very good point. We're going to need to check the building height. And I would suggest that, our staff would suggest that the, that final include a section that illustrated that it met both the height and the angled setback requirements in the LMO.
Okay. The only other comments I still have were the only place I'm seeing brick, and correct me if I'm wrong, is on those entry stairs. If it is in fact just on those, I guess I would say can it be tied into the rest of the building somewhere else? And I believe this was already a staff comment, but the Sherwin-Williams snowbound looks very light to me. So looking at that color. I wasn't sure. Have you already submitted a mortar color? No, okay. Then that's the totality of my comment.
Yeah. And if I could just speak to that, I would just wanted to say that I think the PDF came out a little washed out. The, the actual paint color is a little bit more putty than, than it is white.
Good. And we'll see, we'll see that on the final color board. We'll, we'll be able to see the actual, so that'll be good.
So if I could just piggyback on that, we're going to need to make sure, and, and Steve, I know you know this, but I'm just stating it again. We're going to need to make sure we see a physical color board so that they can look at those colors in relation to everything else and not with a, a screen distortion.
Yeah, we just wanted to use this opportunity to, to show you guys our preliminary palette and get some feedback.
Are you all finished, Annette?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. All right. So it's up to me. Okay. Oh, great comments. I think with, with Annette last meeting and Judd this meeting, we got two people that have just totally immersed themselves in the process here. Great comments. I, I'm really concerned with the scale of this building. I think it's, let me start off with a positive comment. I think it's an attractive building. I think, yeah, I think it looks great. I like what you're doing at the base. The comment about bringing the base up another story, you know, that, that could work. But I, I like the screening. I think it's got a very simple architecture to it. I kind of like it. It's not trying to be too fussy with the details. With that said, it's so tall and it's tall everywhere. There's no break in the roof plane that, that brings it down anywhere to a little more human scale. So I think, I think this is a good looking building, but it should be on a lot that's 50 feet wider. And, you know, maybe, I think the depth is fine. I don't think the depth is affecting it, but you're, it's right on. Could you, if you go to a site plan, it's, I mean, it's, it's, in fact, the north part looks like it's over the setback line. That one right there. We're in that north on the up part of the page. It looks like the stair and the whatever that little, the little bump outs are, you know, five feet, six feet over the property line or setback line, excuse me. And and while the buffers are set in the LMO, the, this board has the ability to require a bigger buffer or more plantings. Depending on the scale of the building and this baby's maxed out. So again, I think you need to go back and check all your setbacks. Your LMO, your, your, your vertical setback illustration on the angle setback. And we got to make this, this work. I think the pool is pushing it out. You know, maybe 50 feet. If the pool wasn't in the middle and everything moved in, I think you're, you would be borderline on fine. I'd still rather it be three levels above parking or some change in the roof. You know, maybe there's some areas are three, some are four, what have you. The last few big projects we've had come through the board, we've had them vary the heights of the roof. Some buildings are three stories, some were four. So I would, I would, that's going to be a big comment of mine. I, I couldn't vote for this in its current form. I like the way it looks. I think it looks good. If this lot were twice as wide, to me, it would probably be a no brainer. But we're just right on, right on that edge. And as Mitchellville develops, you can just imagine, Chris, could you go to the overall bird's eye view? It just shows the property outline. Because we didn't have this one in our set and it kind of, I mean, if somebody builds this same structure to the left and to the right and all the way down Mitchellville Road, we're just going to have this humongous wall of, of buildings all along that, along that ocean edge. And to me, it's just, it would be totally out of scale. We'd have wind tunnels between the buildings and so on and so forth. So we got it, we got to get this thing back from the property line. And in my opinion, it needs to be a, a story shorter. And I would like, I think everybody else's comments were great. With the site planning and the trees and, you know, getting your BZA approval is imperative and that may change some things. I think, I think, I think the plan is very clever. I really like the plan. Go to floor plan, please, one more time, Chris. I think the way you've done the angled balconies and things over the pool to give everybody a view. I like how the, how the middle is, is open. So you can see the ocean. All that works for me. It's just, it's too close to the property line and too big. And I would like to hear on a second round from each board member, what you think on the scale of this thing, because no one's really addressed that. And I'm really worried about those parking spots under the, the separated units. It doesn't look like there's enough room to back out if you're that, if you're, if you're any of those four last spots and somebody's occupying the first two. If you don't have a smart car, I don't think you're going to get in those, but unless those parking stalls are drawn extra long, if that's a 20 foot line there, then that's just not enough room to back out. So. Oh, and a question for you, Steve. This is below flood, correct? You know what the site is? Is it at nine, 10?
The, the site is 10 to 11. And but it is outside of the V zone.
Okay. Does, is your pool house going to be flood proofed or is it going to be up?
I think we are exploring both options, depending on what happens with the flood note.
Okay. Because if it's up, obviously you'll need stairs and a ramp or a lift or whatever. So that's going to, that's going to eat up more surface area for that and probably change the design a little bit. So great comments from everybody. That's mine. I'd like to go a second round. You know, let's just go quickly in the order we went, and I'd like everybody's opinion on the scale. David?
Yeah, I mean, you, Mr. Gittman makes great points about the scale. And, you know, it looks like you could be in conflict with the setback. I mean, I'm in agreement with everything Mr. Gittman said. I mean, it's an attractive building. It is just wall to wall on the property line though, and it's a very large building. I get that there's a lot of vegetation in the front. It'll be screened from the front along the street skate, but it just being property line to property line on the sides. It, it's tight. I'm, I'm in agreement. If there's something you could do to pinch it down or change like Mr. Gittman suggested, breaking up the, the roof. Anything to visually try to bring down the scale of the building, I think would be a good thing.
Okay. Thank you, David. Debbie, second round?
Okay. When I was reviewing these plans, I did look at the heights of the building and from a, a previous project, I believe we determined that 75 feet is the high highest that a building can go. And this meets that. I think it's 60 something feet. You are correct about the, the size of the buildings on the lot. I don't know how Steve could work with this, but maybe we could get them a little bit smaller. But another thing I looked at while we were talking is security, because it is pretty much out there by itself right now. But I also wanted to ask, I think we have to leave beach access to every person. And correct me if I'm wrong on that, Chris, but I was just wondering how people that aren't part of this complex would be allowed to go to the beach or if there's some kind of security that will be, be put in place so that they can't access this property.
There's no need to provide public access on this par, parcel to the beach. There's public beach access further down, but there's no requirement to provide public access.
Okay. So I think this building meets the height requirement, but it, it would be nice if we could consolidate it just a little bit more so that we've got more open space on each side of the building. Thank you.
Thank you. Who was next? John Maleski?
I mean, I, I agree with, with your comments as well, Michael. I mean, I think that, that is all good points. You know, overall, the building looks great. I, I really don't have anything else that I could add. I would just be redundant, but I, I, I agree with what, what you guys have shared.
Okay, thank you. Jed?
I, I echo the comments today in this second round and your, your additions. And then as far as how this building looks from the outside, yes. And then also that, that pool courtyard. This, this certainly isn't barrening as far as the number of trees, bringing down the building scale and even having spacing between the buildings. So they'll want to be very conscientious in that landscape treatment inside help really bring down the scale in that courtyard. But otherwise, I echo the comments today or in this round.
Thank you. And Annette?
I completely agree. Express it more strongly than my mere saying, try to vary the massing. Because that what, I did check also that the building height met the, was lower than the 75 feet. So I didn't know how much I could state on saying it, it needs to be lower. But I completely agree, especially the comment of if one imagines this happening on this site and then all the adjacent site all having that same, then I think we lose the Hilton Head quality and become more of the other vacation spots that one sort of knows on the coast. And so I think looking at it in, in that looking ahead perspective, I think it is super important. I think it would already help. And I, again, I, I appreciate the fact that every unit is return on the investment. But one thing to, to consider, and it, it makes the second unit in more attractive is, you know, especially towards the beach view, which is going to be visible from the beach. Whether you lower it at that side. So complete agreement. The massing really is too much for the site. And again, the setback angle may end up dictating that anyway. I can't hear you, Michael.
Sorry, sorry. I hit the wrong button. And thank you. And to answer your question you had in there, this board is to review things on an aesthetic basis, which includes scale. And even if something is allowed by LMO, it doesn't mean that we're held to that in our comments and, and our motions and approvals and disapprovals. So, you know, we would never do it arbitrarily, but if there's good reason, which I think here, there's good reason that there needs to be a bigger setback. And I think that has been brought up by other members. When, when the applicant goes through the process, again, since the fire lane, we know the fire lane does not work. All right. So that fire lane is going to have to be out of the buffer. To say we have a 20 foot buffer plus, what do you need for a fire lane? 15 feet? And then from that fire lane, we're going to want landscape up against the building. So on one side, we're looking at 40 feet at least from the property line. So that's going to change this building footprint by itself. And the other side is already over the setback line. We don't want that over the setback line. So it's going to change. But I think we just need to see what it's going to change to before we can accurately approve or disapprove anything, in my opinion. I'm one board member. You know, so I'm going to let, I, I skipped Chris again. So Chris, why don't you go ahead and do your round of input and then we'll, we'll, we'll work on where the motion goes. But go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry. I think all the comments were good. I don't have anything to add. It would just be redundant in, in John's words. And, and I would also, I would just ditto what you said. You all have the authority to work with the building height to try to, to try to make it more in keeping with the design guide.
Okay, thank you, Chris. Okay. So I'm going to do a little sidebar here. Since we have two relatively, we have one very new member and another relatively new member and also for the applicant's information. Now we're at the point where we make a motion on whether to approve or disapprove this. Now staff has suggested approval with conditions. And it'll be a long list of conditions. It would be, and if it gets, if, if the board agrees and goes with the staff plus other comments, then you would be able to go to final. I think there's a lot of questions here and being an architect, I, I would caution you to going to final because it takes a lot of time to go to final, if there's a lot of unanswered questions. So. and anybody can, you know, can answer this or, you know, do a rebuttal. I would suggest that you come back with another conceptual. Because I cannot vote for this in its current form for all the reasons stated. Now you've got one, two, five other members. But the risk you take of getting denied, and Chris, please back, please piggyback on this. If you get a denial, you have to wait a certain period of time before you can ever come back before the board. If you withdraw and come back with a new concept, a revised concept, sorry, not a new, a revised, then you can come back next meeting, next in middle. So Chris, is that correct?
That's correct. You're prevented on coming back to the DRB if, with the denial for a full year without the LMO says substantially changing the project. And, you know, we can, we can go round and round on what that means, but in an effort to prevent that, a lot of times people just withdraw before the vote so they preserve their right to come back as soon as they want to.
Yeah, and I'm, you know, I'm, I'm pro-development, so I, I always view my position as trying to help people get what they want built, built, but it has to be cognizant of the neighbors, the neighborhood, and the other people that will be building in the future. And if we have a row of these down Mitchellville Road, it'll, it would be a disaster. So my, my opinion is pull the building in from the sides. Look at scaling it down or at least breaking up the scale. And I'm going to, I'm going to, Teresa, I'm going to allow Steve a four-minute reply time. So if you could start the timer. And if Steve, if you would like to make any final argument before we go to motion or no motion. Yeah, go ahead, Steve.
No, I think what I would say, Michael, is that that I agree and I really appreciate the, the board's thoughtful comments. And it is a big building and there are certainly ways that we can fairly easily break the, the massing up a little bit and make it a little bit more respectful on the two sides. And I think we, we, we know we have to revisit the the setback on the, on the, what it ends up being this plan south, but it's, it's the east side of the building anyway. So I, I think it's in our best interest to withdraw the submission and, and, and bring a new conceptual design back to you at the next meeting addressing some of the board's comments.
Okay, great. And I think that's a good choice. Like I said, I want to help you get this through, so I don't like giving denials. I'd rather make this a work in progress. So. So we have the applicant with a, a formal withdrawal. So there will be no motion made. The meeting minutes from this are made available to the public, Steve, so if you didn't take a lot of notes, you can always get access to it. But I, you know, like I said, I don't, I can only kind of guess. I, I try to get the vibe on how everybody's going to vote. And we could end up with a split vote, which is the same as a denial, or do we have an odd number of people? One, two? We have six people, so you would need, you'd need four people on board with you, and I, I'm not feeling it. So I think that's a good choice and we'll definitely, because I, bottom line, I think it's a good-looking building. And like I said, I really like the plan. I just wish your site was bigger. So. And I think Mr. Molesky had a great comment about the pool house blocking your view too, so I might want to look at that. All right, so, all right then. Thanks, Steve.
Thanks, everybody. I really appreciate all the comments.
All right, you can sign out now. Thank you. Okay, let's see. Moving on to new development final, Parker's DRB 001382-2020. Chris?
Mr. Chairman, I need to recuse myself from this project. This is Judd.
Okay, so soon? Yeah, all right, thanks, Judd. All right. Go ahead, Chris.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Parker's Kitchen received conceptual. The site is the vacant southwest corner of Matthews Drive and William Hilton Parkway in the Sea Turtle Marketplace. The site is an out parcel served by Sea Turtle Marketplace Infrastructure. It in, currently includes a rough grated building pad, installed perimeter vertical curb, and, as I said, in-place stormwater facilities. The existing newly planted buffer and what we'd call, what we'll call legacy trees in that buffer will be retained and supplemented. Two curb cuts, which connect to the Sea Turtle Marketplace roadway network, will be improved. Wide pedestrian and bike paths run adjacent to the southwest and western portions of the parcel, allowing for access from the site to the island-wide pathway network. The intent is that the store facade and pump canopy will blend with the surrounding retail development with the use of brick and tabby facades and a metal roof detailing. The building is accessible from both sides. Pervious parking will match the pavers provided elsewhere in Sea Turtle Marketplace. Native species will highlight the buffer area. Parking islands and building foundation with evergreen screens will shield service areas. I'm sorry. Let me get off of my apologies. Staff recommends final approval with the following conditions. The exterior brick shall be reconsidered by the applicant and a facade with revised materials be resubmitted for review by staff and one DRB member for approval. The concern here is that the building is mostly brick and the predominant material in Sea Turtle Marketplace is stucco. So just to tie it a little bit closer to Sea Turtle Marketplace. Two, the anodized silver roof shall be reconsidered by the applicant and a revised material finish or color shall be resubmitted for review by staff and one DRB, DRB member for approval. The concern here is that that roof finish is highly reflective and there are options that would read as metal but not be as reflective. The applicant shall, three, the applicant shall revise the reflected ceiling plan of the canopy to include more beams and joist details and resubmit for review by staff and one DRB member. The concern here was that it would, just a little bit more detailing to that ceiling plan for the canopy, so it's more at a human scale. Four, the lighting plan shall meet LMO requirements. Five, the parking lot shoebox fixtures shall match Sea Turtle Marketplace fixtures. And six, the bollards shall match Sea Turtle Marketplace bollards. The site is outlined in red here. Off to your, off to the left of the screen is Sea Turtle Marketplace, the relatively new, excuse me. Sort of diagonally across the intersection of Highway 278 and Matthews again is another gas station that's recently been, well, recently, it's been a couple of years now, but they're working on getting approval to renovate that whole site. And you can see, well, you can't see it here because it's not a new one, but the, the airport is coming in sort of in, back in here behind that. Does everybody know where we are? Speak up if you don't. Okay, hearing none. Just some images of Sea Turtle Marketplace and the site. This is a site plan for the building. There we go. Grading plan. Layout, floor layout. Elevations of the building. The, the brick is all around. The building is mostly brick with these stucco panels set in. There's a side service yard and screening. Section through the building. More sections through the walls. An elevation of the canopy. Plan for the pumps. This is the reflected ceiling plan. So staff's suggestion is that there'd be more detailing of, of these members that are running horizontal and, or vertical, or perpendicular to the, to the ceiling material, just to give it a little bit more detail. Section through that canopy. Service yard and screen elevation. Planting plan. And color board. Lighting plan. That concludes staff's recommendations.
Okay, thank you, Chris. Is the applicant present? And if so, please identify yourselves for everyone that'll be speaking.
Mr. Chairman, I have Dan Kiefer as the main applicant. We're working now to unmute applicants that we have for con record.
All right. Well, you can keep Dan muted. That's okay.
This is Dan Kiefer. You guys can hear me?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, thank you. Thomas is joining the call. I think, is he? Thomas, you there?
Yes, I'm here. This is Thomas Matthews with Parker's.
And Dan, can you just say your company, even though we all know who you are?
This is Dan Kiefer with Whitmer Jones Kiefer.
Thanks. All right, you guys have a 10-minute floor. Whatever you would like to add to Chris's narrative?
I'll go down through the list and I'll let Thomas join in. The, the lighting plan, that'll be an update that will make coordinate with Chris as a condition, as, as mentioned. The bollards, we are, we are going to change those to match the existing Sea Turtle. And we're assuming that can be a condition as well that will coordinate with Chris and staff. And then I know, Thomas, would you like to talk about the brick and the roof and the ceiling plan?
Yeah, hey, this is Thomas Matthews with Parker's again. I did want to ask a question about the bollards, the wheel stops. Are the wheel stops required if we have continuous bollards in front of each parking stall?
Wheel stops are not required if there are bollards.
Okay, wonderful. We'd like to keep it as streamlined and clean as possible and, and, and moving forward with the store, we're going to probably put either a single bollard at the front of each parking stall or two, just depending on the dimensions of those. We haven't finalized or gotten those dimensions yet, so. But in regard to the building and the details there and the construction materials, we feel that with niches being stucco and the brackets being painted and just the different detailings of the, the brick with the inset and the little punchouts above the sides that have the little details, those sort of little diamond details. We feel that it certainly reflects some of the other buildings in the shopping center. But it does stand out enough as a standalone building. And obviously, we prefer brick because of its durability. Obviously, for the aesthetics too, we prefer it. But it does have a parched look, so it does have the effect of a more, I guess, consistent finish. It's our position. We'd like to keep it like that and hope the board would support that. The roof, we are willing to change the roof to a color that would be similar to the Copley gray. I'm going to get with our supplier on that and I can provide some color options to Chris and we can review that with one of the members of the DRB to get approval on that as a condition. I guess the last comment was about the reflected ceiling on the canopy. I just wanted to get some more clarification from you, Chris, or from members of the board to understand what y'all would like to see there, because we did add members to the sort of beam-like members to the ceiling there to give, give that more detail, to give it more of a structured look so that it's not just the posts going up into the underside of the canopy. I'm not sure if you were looking for more detail in those actual members or if you wanted more of those. But I, I have seen the Kroger fuel canopy and I, I think it's a good-looking canopy, but to me, it is a little bit busy with too many of those things going on. So just, we wanted to keep it looking structural and also aesthetically. I think it looks good the way it is now, but wanted to clarify that feedback from you too.
To, just to that, the distances between the beams are 30-foot and what appears to be 18-foot. And staff's concern was that was, just seemed a lot. It seemed, the, the distances seemed not excessive, but there needed to be less distance between the beams for a more pedestrian feel or a more human-scale feel, feel on that canopy. And that's the, that's why we're asking you to put the detail in. It's that it's such a, a big part of the site and we want to make sure that it's in, in a pedestrian scale or a human scale.
What, I guess the question would be, what kind of, when you say detail, do you mean more detail to the members we put in? Or you would like something in between those to break that, to break that distance up?
No more detail to the beams, just more beams. So something in between the existing beams.
Okay, we, we could certainly look at that. I think the way our architect had designed it again was to make it look structural and we felt if you put them in between, they're more just sort of decorative and don't have the effect of being structural, but we can certainly look at it and bring it back to you all if we can get approval with conditions.
All right, anything else, Thomas or Dan? You guys good?
Yeah, we're good.
Yeah, I don't think so, unless there was something else we needed to address, but thank you all very much.
Yeah, stay, stay available in case any of the board members have a direct question for you, please. And then if, and then if you're called upon for a question, could you just say who's speaking? So we have it for the record, whether it's Dan or Thomas. You don't have to give us your full name again. First names will work now. Okay, so let's start with Debbie. You're first on the list. Debbie Rimke, please.
Thank you. I agree with the majority of staff's comments. As far as the brick and the stucco go, I'm happy with that the way it is. It's a lighter colored brick and the stucco panels, I think, meet the, the requirement for stucco for the rest of the shopping center. Although in the entire shopping- Although, and the entire shopping center isn't stucco, there's a lot of it that is, and I think the brick brings a little bit more diversity and a little bit more aesthetics to the building, so I'm, I'm happy with that. Also, on the canopy, I'm, I'm pretty happy with the way it looks, but if, if the, and it sounds like the additional members would just be aesthetic also. So I don't have a strong opinion, but you know, if it stayed that way, that would be fine with me. Otherwise, it's a good-looking building and we look forward to having another Parker's location on Hilton Head, thank you.
Thanks Debbie, and Debbie reminded me of something. Could each member please comment specifically on your feeling on the brick and your feeling on the canopy and roof too, if you like, but those three items seem to be the, the issues for discussion.
Okay, can I, can I just say that, yes, I, I think that we could get a little different color on the roof. I think that like on the, the main building, I think some of those roofs are kind of a top color. And I understand it's because of reflectivity issue also, so yeah, different roof color would be good, thank you.
Thanks Debbie, and with regard to the roof, Thomas already said they would be willing to pick a different color, so that may not be a big issue, but still it'd be good to have everybody's input. Next, John Maleski.
Sure, thanks. I guess first I agree with staff in regards to the, the roof and it doesn't seem like that would be an issue, just to cut down any reflectivity concerns. The, the front elevation, I guess the two lower elements of the front elevation where there's a shed roof there, just to have some confirmation that those will conceal any mechanical equipment that would be placed on the roof. I'm sure you guys have, have already looked at it and confirmed all the, the elevations of those parapets would, uh, would make all that happen, but just, you know, it's a double check to make sure that that would occur and looking at the, at the rear elevation, I'm familiar with the other Parkers and I see how you have all the, the brick with the stucco panels in there. Again, assuming there would be plantings in there to kind of break up some of that in the areas where the stucco panels are, is that correct?
Dan or, Dan, I think that's a Dan question, Dan?
Yes, there, there's plantings that align with the, those stucco areas.
Okay, so, yeah, that was my only concern because that'll probably be a pretty, uh, you know, viewable rear elevation there from, at least by looking at the site plan here, okay, now I see that, that's, I, I think it's going to look great, so yeah, nice, nice job with the project, thank you.
What do you think about the brick, John?
Is that meant to be like a Savannah gray or?
It's, it's meant to have the appearance that it was parched or has a little, you know, um, a little bit of a finish on it, like from a, kind of like a reclaimed look to it, but it has a almost like a buffed appearance, so it gives the building sort of a more uniform look. Like I said, more closer to a, a stucco or parched or like, you know, lime-washed building.
I guess my only comment there without getting into too much detail is that, you know, the mortar color perhaps could have some effect on how that brick ends up reading and, and in contrast to the stucco panels, I wouldn't want it to feel too washed out, you know. I, I kind of like to see a little more contrast in there and definition, so the, the whole facade, you could kind of pick up more on the, on the depth and the texture. So that would be my only concern, I know I haven't directly answered the, the question, but I think, uh, I think, I think that the mortar is going to have a little bit of effect on how that, how that brick reads. I, I might need to take a look at a, at a, at a sample, perhaps.
Yeah. This is Thomas, am I allowed to address the, that comment?
Yeah, go ahead, please.
Thank you, I, I was just going to say, we do use a white mortar and the bricks have an undertone of a, you know, reddish, not reddish, but that, that sample, that meridian sample that's up on the screen right now is pretty true to reality, so there is a nice contrast between the mortar and the brick. And you do see, as opposed to a store we just did in Charleston where we actually did lime wash the brick where it took away some of that contrast and give it more complete, not completely uniform because there's sort of variation in the lime wash, this will have, you'll see the lines from the mortar, so it will give a, you know, a crisper look.
Okay, I think that would be more to my, uh, my satisfaction, I guess, by, by having the texture there and, and the contrast. That helps.
Okay, thank you, John. Annette Lippert?
So I actually went back to the concept drawings because I wasn't on the board then yet, so I, I do appreciate the addition of four pitted roofs. I agree with the color change of the roof as recommended by staff. And I don't have a problem with the brick. But, but it took me a little while to figure out what seemed to sort of keep catching my eye. And then looking at the rest of the building at Sea Turtle, they seem to all have a water table. And once I sketch that in, to me, it resolves sort of a lot of the base conditions, also maybe that the stucco gets a base trim to it. So I guess my thought would be to look at having a water table or base condition on the brick. I don't think it has to be on the entire building, but as soon as I sketch that in, to me, it transforms the building to really fit more in line with the rest of Sea Turtle. To me, since the, the grout has been discussed, and looking at the sample, to me, it looked very white. I questioned that it would stay that white, just by virtue of being weathered. And I guess I would lean towards a slightly darker grout. With regard to the beams on the canopy, I'm okay with, with the canopy as it is.
Sorry, I was muted. Talk and do nothing. Are you, is that all, Annette?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And David McAllister?
And yeah, so for the bricks, I'm good with the brick that's proposed. You know, if you think about it in context, on the other side of the property, you have the Starbucks, which is in my mind a unique building and a little different from the rest of the shopping center. You know, I think about the shape of the roof and to me, that's a standalone sort of unique building and I, I think the brick here is acceptable. I think the, maybe a darker grout, as Ms. Lippert suggested, would be a good thing, but not, I don't feel that strongly about it. The, I appreciate you guys being willing to change the roof because that was one thing that, that did jump out at me, changing the roof material. And other than that, I'm in agreement with all of staff's comments, with maybe the exception of the, the beams and the reflected ceiling. I, I just don't have a strong opinion one way or the other on that. So that's really all my comments, I think landscape looks great, it's a great-looking project, excited to have it, have Parker's come on the island.
All right, great, thank you. Yep, again, all good comments, question for Dan. At the last meeting, I remember that if we could go to a site plan or a landscape plan, if we could. Yep, you had it right there, at the side entry facing Matthews, there was some discussion on that little planter strip behind the sidewalk in the building.
Yes.
And there was some discussion that, and that might be, uh, Parker's has done on some of their stores, a green wall. What did we end up with there?
We ended up.
Something vertical?
There's not a green wall there. But we added the planter in where you see those 10, yeah, exactly, right there.
Okay. The question for David, David's at work for you? That little?
Yeah, looks like they're a potocarpus, I mean, that's about the best you can, you could put in a space like that. It'll get a solid hedge and get some height to it.
Okay, because we're, this board's been moving for some time to try to get as much green between the building and the hard surface as we can and one of the options we had discussed was doing some jasmine or whatever there on that wall. But if, 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 if you're good with it, David, I'm good with it. So, yeah, I like the brick. I think the brick you picked is very appropriate. If, if the comment to go maybe one shade darker on the mortar is a standing comment, I would be on board with that, but I'm good and I think David hit it right on the head that this is almost like a mini anchor akin to what Starbucks is to this shopping center. So it should relate. And I think it relates enough for me. And I like the detailing, it's got a little modern kind of twist on it, so I think if you change the roof color, you, you certainly got my vote, so along with, let me just look at the staff comments again real quick. Exterior brick, the roof for sure, we need to change. The reflected ceiling canopy, yeah, I'm, I'm kind of wishy-washy on that one. It looks like there are some beams dropped. Maybe I would suggest to the applicant that you maybe try to add something that's more 12-foot on center than 30-foot on center or something that makes a somewhat of a nice grid. And then I think that would make everybody happy. The lighting plan, of course, and then the shoebox fixtures shall match the Sea Turtle marketplace and the bollards we already talked about, so. So I think we're, I think we're in pretty good shape here, so if somebody would, Annette had brought up a water table. I don't know that it's necessary, as everybody else does, because again, this is a building that's a little bit separated, it should relate to Sea Turtle, but it doesn't have to be exactly Sea Turtle. And I think the colors you picked and the tabby you're using, and if we can get the roof color in that same vein, then I think that's enough relation for me. But I'll open it up if anybody, wait, Chris, did you get your turn?
I'm good, thank you, sir.
You're good, okay, sorry. Is there any second round of opinion on this, just go ahead and raise your hand? All right, so would anybody like to make a motion?
We'll take a stab at it. I'll make a motion regarding Parker's DRB 001382-2020 with the following conditions that you, the applicant, reexamine the grout color to go a shade darker. Add beams to the reflected ceiling plan closer to 12-foot on center. The light fixtures and bollards shall match the rest of the Sea Turtle Marketplace Shopping Center. And, let's see. And the roof color material be reevaluated as well. And, did I miss anything?
Did you say the, did you say the brick? Specifically, I remember you saying grout, did you say the brick?
Yeah, I just said the, the grout could be, should be reexamined to be a shade darker.
Brick?
Brick, brick is okay as submitted.
As submitted, okay. And the only other thing I would add to that is that these conditions may be reviewed and approved by staff and one DRB member.
Okay, yeah, and the following conditions can be reviewed and approved by staff and one DRB member.
Okay. All right, we have a motion, I'll open it up for any final discussion or additions, subtractions. All right, so we have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second.
All right, we have a second from Ms. Remke. All right, Teresa, would you, again, vote yes or no when Teresa calls your name? Teresa, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Oh, who is that?
This is Annette. Sorry, that I'm only reading this now, there was a comment about verifying that the rooftop equipment is fully hidden.
All right, Mr. McAllister, would you like to add that to your motion?
Yes, I will amend my motion to add that the equipment on the roof shall be concealed by the parapet wall. But.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, now, Ms. Remke, would you like to redo your, your second?
I second the amended motion.
Thank you. All right, now Teresa, your turn.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ms. Lippert?
Yes.
Mr. McAllister?
Yes.
Ms. Remke?
Yes.
Mr. Maleski?
Yes.
Mr. Gentiman?
Yes. All right, we have unanimous approval with conditions and.
Mr. Chairman, would you care, would you care to specify or would the DRB care to volunteer for the one member to review these changes?
I'd like to nominate Annette. And if Annette can't do it, then I would. Would you accept that nomination, Annette?
I accept.
Okay, there you go. And if for some reason, Annette can't fulfill the duties, then yeah, you can always call me, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
All right. All right, so Dan and Thomas, you may log off at your convenience, thanks for coming.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. And now we get to alteration edition Smokehouse, DRB 001533-2020.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Smokehouse was approved by the DRB on January 28th of this year, that was, to be clear, that was a final approval. During the building permit review process, the applicant found that the exterior stairway on the left side of the building would need to be enclosed with walls to meet the life safety requirements of the building code. Enclosing the stair which encroaches four foot into the setback required variance approval from the Board of Zoning Appeals that has been granted. So to be clear, the stairs were allowed until they, into the setback until it was enclosed. And then that enclosure of that space required the variance. Because the changes represent a significant change to the DRB-approved plans, approval from the DRB of this change is also required. The changes to the design are limited to the exterior stairway, which has been clouded in on the drawings, which is now walled in and clad in the same stained siding as the front entry gable and has the wire, and has wire climbing trellis panels for jasmine vines on the front elevation. Staff is concerned about the inherent maintenance and care over time of the vine on the trellis. Staff suggests the trellis option be reconsidered in favor of an architectural element similar to but not matching the banks of windows on the right elevation or the covered window on the front elevation. Additionally, the landscape plan does not reflect the proposed changes, i.e. there are no vines specified. For these reasons, staff recommends denial. The site is outlined in red. The red roof structure you see is the old Smokehouse building. Immediately to the north or right above it is the Greco building up here, and you have Palmetto Bay running diagonally. across your screen. Arrow Road is seen in the back. Does everybody know where we are? Raise your hand or let me know if you are confused about where we are. Seeing none? This is the site plan for the new Smokehouse. I would remind you that it is built on the pretty much the same foundation as the old. But this this plan represents modifications to the site and the building. Again, the site plan. Okay, here's the landscape plan. The stairwell is right, right here. You can see the cloud around the area. Revised ceiling or roof plan, excuse me. Again, that clouded area represents the addition and the addition is enclosed right here. Floor plan. Okay, so you can see here the trellis that would run up two stories and it's again, it's clouded in. So the suggestion is that there be some sort of architectural detail in the line of the window dressing here or this bank of windows here instead of a trellis element on that elevation. And just to follow up down here, that clouded area is now enclosed. Those stairs are now enclosed and you'll see those windows. Sections through the building. Wall sections. Covered windows. Column and porch sections. This is the screen that will be on the be applied to the building. In staff comments, they had originally specified a black, but they have changed it to a bronze color. So they have addressed that part of staff's comment. And that's what that screen that that trellis would look like. That concludes staff's presentation.
Thanks, Chris. Chris, does the fact that they resubmitted a different color change the the opinion of staff approval?
No, sir, it does not. Staff's concern is that there'll be that vine will be maintained on the structure that there's just there's just a lot involved in that and staff that's staff's concern. And then maybe an architectural, there's maybe an architectural solution to this that would be more, for lack of a better word, permanent.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. All right, so is the applicant present? And if so, please identify yourself.
Yes, sir. This is Joe DePaul with Parker Design Group.
Hi, Joe.
Joe.
Hi, Michael.
And I'm getting an echo.
Well, that must be me then.
Well, I'm going to be quiet.
I'm going to be quiet anyway.
I do not, but I can dial in quickly. It'll take a minute.
Yeah, go ahead.
Let me turn off the Bluetooth speaker.
It's better now.
Let it be known that Jerry Leonard with the Smokehouse is present.
No, thank you for identifying yourself, Jerry. Do you want to? Anything to add while we're waiting for Joe?
Sure. I mean, I mean, this staircase has been a long arduous process of zoning appeal approvals and, you know, we really love the exterior staircase and wish we were not back before you guys again. However, this this element now that we're asking for a Jasmine climbing system here, I think where that staircase sits, if you're looking at it from the road, this would make this part of this project really kind of disappear into the landscape. It's really kind of tucked towards the side of the building and will never be seen. However, once this jasmine grows, we'd be having that wonderful smell sometime in the third week of April. And I think it's a great idea for the project.
Thank you. We got you back yet, Joe?
Yeah, I think is that better?
Okay, yeah, much better. All right. Anything you'd like to add?
Sure. The, you know, we can certainly get a updated landscape plan with with the Jasmine marked in for staff approval. That wouldn't be an issue. As far as architectural alternatives on this face of the stair. We're faced with the challenge that it's a it needs to be a fiery at a wall because perpendicular to the rest of the building. Which really precludes us from from using windows in that facade. We thought this was a a nice solution to add a little interesting elevation for greenery. And really, when you're out there on site, looking at at the building from the street, the tree canopy already hangs in front of that. And and so this kind of extends that down to the ground and gives us a nice touch of nature in that back corner.
Okay, thank you. All right, so we'll go through the board comments, each member, and and Joe and Jerry, if you would just hang in there with us in case anybody has a question for you. And when our landscape architects address this, I'd like you to address the feasibility of this actually coming, actually working would be a big thing for me. So but we're going to start with a non-landscape architect, John Molesky.
Thank you. I mean, I have to say, I would I'm looking at this from a point of view of let's pretend that the jasmine doesn't work out. And all we're left with is the is the is the metal grid there. And I think it'll look pretty cool, you know, I kind of liked how the the Smokehouse originally was in the prior submissions with even the red color. And I'm sorry, I digress there. But again, on that, I guess it's the, what am I looking at here? Left elevation there, I guess, with that corrugated metal. I mean, I think that's an interesting element, you know, maybe we could have some discussions on the color of these two by two grids, whether they're, you know, black or now submitted brown or stainless steel or something like that. So it, you know, it better complements the whole thing. But without making it more complicated, I think the brown metal looks great. And if the jasmine actually thrives and works out, I think it would only be that much of an improvement. The only suggestion that I could offer that maybe will help everyone move along with this point is if you look at the let's pick on the right elevation there where that you have that whole nice wall of windows right there that are kind of divided with some vertical elements and a couple horizontal elements. Maybe there's a component of that that we apply to this screening that faces the front elevation just to perhaps break that up a little bit by adding in little, you know, strips of, I don't know, quarter inch by two inch horizontal or vertical elements just to break it up. But otherwise, you know, I like it and I would vote to approve. Thank you.
All right, thanks, John. All right. Judd, questions?
All right, so I get the I get the first stab at the the landscape architects.
Yes, you do.
So the first thing I always think about when I think about this site and I think about the building orientation is that there is a nice overhanging live oak that is along that property line. It's it's kind of the reason why Pat didn't really put a lot of plant material over there in his initial planting plan. So the thought is that even from the road currently, that oak overhangs quite a bit. And also that this corner of the building is southwest facing, which with the fact that the bar area to the, you know, to the east of this, this this side is going to be in a lot of shake in the end, especially the lower reaches of it. And I'm concerned about the jasmine growing and how much time it will take for jasmine to grow 22 feet up this trellis. It's it's quite an area and, you know, you only can get jasmine so big even from nursery. So I'm concerned about the time that it would take. I'd be more in favor of allowing the the vertical shiplap to read on its own. And if there needed to be an element on that facade, on that nine foot facade, I mean, we could even introduce just a sable palmetto. You know, you could go with a, you know, 14 to 16 foot palmetto and it would pretty much kind of occupy that middle space. If we're concerned about that wall. But otherwise, you know, with that oak existing in that area. I certainly appreciate Jerry noting that the there is a short window where the jasmine is a very appealing element to have close to dining with its smell. But I'm just I'm just concerned about how long the jasmine and the efforts that would take to fill that trellis. And if it wouldn't just be better off to have more of a vertical element such as sable palmetto occupy that space and kind of interact with that live oak that that's there. That's it.
Okay. Thank you. Annette Lippert?
Looking at it from the architectural side, having heard the landscape concerns, I think using a hardy panel, sort of infill panel inside of that the the siding, I think could work and pick up on some of the cues from the gabled entry while being a secondary element. On the side of the stair, I will say I don't feel super strongly about it, but I'm not sure that we need that two new window types need to get added to the project. I just wonder if either one new type gets added or if one of the existing window types can get used. And I'm looking at the rear elevation, maybe two of those windows could work or something like that. Those are my two comments.
When when you're talking about it hardy infill, can you elaborate on that a little bit? That would be on instead of this, the cage, instead of the wire mesh?
And I'm seeing over the main entry, there's already the detailing of painted smooth hardy panel. Understanding that that's a firewall, so obviously you cannot have any you know, with it not having an opening, you wouldn't want to go with the awning. But if it just becomes an exposed facade, I think it's too much of a blank wall. So that it has a panel detail inside of that siding to just break up the wall.
All right, thank you. Joe, I'm going to give you a chance after everybody talks to respond again. So just to let you know. David McAllister?
I think Judd said a lot of the stuff that I was thinking. You know, it's I've got concerns about the jasmine. It may grow fine. But, you know, I hadn't thought about that live oak branch, which I get that helps screen things and makes it go away. But you kind of can't count on that because, you know, God forbid, we had a hurricane or a storm and a branch goes down and it's exposed. So we can't really count on that. But the the jasmine, I think the height of the trellis is kind of pushing how far it can climb up. It might reach the top, but for sure, you're probably looking at least five years, maybe eight years before it even achieves the design intent. I've read that, you know, jasmine grows anywhere from three to five or six feet a year. That seems consistent with what we've seen. I like the idea of it. I really like this, the architecture of this building and it looks great. And personally, I think the the trellis might take a little bit away from it. I would be more in favor of a an architectural solution as staff suggested. So that's, those are my thoughts.
All right, thank you. Ms. Remke, Debbie?
Well, I think everybody's kind of addressed my thoughts also. I think that trellis is not the solution here. So I think that the architectural detailing is a better way to go about this. Otherwise, I agree with all the comments. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I'm I'm in agreement with everybody. I think John said at first that you need to look at this as if the jasmine never grows to its full potential. And the fact that it could take eight years and still not make it. Then we're relying on what our former chairman used to say, we're relying on the landscape to hide something. So it's not a it's not an ideal situation. So I think I would have to support everyone else's inclination that we go with more of an architectural solution. So that's it for me. Chris, do you have anything to add? Then I'm going to open it up for Joe for a couple minutes if he wants it.
I do not. Thank you.
Okay. Joe, any reply? Any last minute arguments?
Sure, I understand the concerns about the ivy or the jasmine. And we'd like for it to work. It sounds sounds like the boards kind of made up their mind that that won't be approved. I did think Judd's point was interesting about providing a palm or some larger understory tree in that space to break up the front and just do the siding. If we can go to the site plan. The building, when you do the renovation or viewing it square on, but the building's actually tweaked to the road and and the stair really tucks back. And you can kind of see where the fireplace is in the front left of the building. And then the the property line on the angle where the the trees and the nice heavy buffer between this structure and and the Red Fish Restaurant are, it really necks it down and you really don't ever get the full exposure of that wall anywhere in the experience of the building. I think that trying to do something with a hardy panel, a fake window or or something to that effect on this feels foreign to the project. And I would ask consideration that we would be approved with just going with the siding and removing the trellises altogether and providing some understory tree in front of that facade.
And where, Joe, where's the you said you needed a rated wall?
Yes.
Where is that exactly? Which wall need? All of them or just?
Stair itself needs to be two hour rated and the the face open to Red Fish Restaurant and the side property line is an exterior wall that isn't adjacent to any other walls. It doesn't need that rating. But the perpendicular wall does because the exterior wall, the bar is right next to it.
So, okay, so the the wire mesh side doesn't not need to be rated.
The wire mesh side does need to be rated.
Oh, does not be rated. Okay, okay. All right. Okay, thank you. All right, I'll open it up to any any second round of thoughts. I think we should in the motion, we should give Joe not just a big no, but some direction. Anybody, second round? All right, Annette? All right, Annette?
I can get behind Judd's recommendation. Having a tree become the element that breaks up or softens that facade and leaving it all siding.
Sorry, I'm talking with my mute button on. Can, I mean, yes, I'm intrigued by that. Can we go into a little bit more detail on that? Little, Joe, can you go through that one more time, please?
Sure. So we would basically remove the trellises and that base of the stair would be the same stained siding that is on the entry element, entry gable element on the foyer.
Yeah, I mean, that sounds reasonable to me. Other board members? So we can keep this project moving? Judd, go ahead.
Yeah, and then to the point of, for the landscape, I understand, you know, landscape solutions when it comes to buildings are not the best. But I think if sable palmetto was specified, we'd either go with a single with an overall height of, if you did 14 to 16 feet, that would cover that area basically between the floors. And if you wanted to pair that up with a shorter one in the 10 to 12 range, that certainly would cover up that little corner close to the service area and give you a staggered, just so that it's not a single plant sitting out there. But I think if you did two palmettos, like I said, 10 to 12 and 14 to 16 would give you the coverage on that wall that would help.
Okay. Right. So do we have enough? If anyone's opposed to this new direction, speak up. All right, all right. Looks like we maybe got something for you, Joe. All right, Annette, would you like to make a motion based on that direction?
Can I comment on the palm? Jerry Leonard?
Oh, yeah, sure. Please, go ahead.
I mean, nobody has a feel for the space, obviously. Because if you're talking about putting two palms in this area, there's no room for that. The growth in that area would not allow for two palms. It's a very valuable piece of, part of the site for me. It's where we play cornhole and games like that. It's a place where children play. And this concept of putting a palm there just makes no sense to me. Now, if we had a hardy plank siding element to that exposure and you had a wire grid system that blended into the, to the paint color, which is what it's gonna do, and the jasmine doesn't grow, it would look great. It still would look great, okay? I did have jasmine on the south side of the building before it burned down. And that jasmine grew and filled up a section of lattice in a matter of three years and was incredible. We're talking about a decision that was made by this board to not allow a red roof when we have hundreds of red roofs on this island because it didn't blend in with the natural landscape. Now we're giving you a natural landscape and it's not blending in. It makes no sense. So that is my comment. Thank you.
Okay. All right.
Mr. Chairman, if I could suggest, if I could suggest, I think there are two options here. The board could certainly approve it with conditions that, you know, the trellis be removed and the palm trees be added. Or I guess with respect, the applicant could withdraw and come back with a different solution to the issues raised.
Yeah, I think we got just too many, too many different directions here. You know, what about, okay, what about the proposal to put hardy on it with a color blending mesh? Another one's on the table. I mean, we're gonna, we're gonna spend about five more minutes discussion options and we're gonna make a decision, so. But with no palm tree.
I mean, I would say out of respect for the owner's wishes, you know, to at least perhaps explore that suggestion you just made, Michael, there with the, with some paneling and whatnot to see if that still satisfies, you know, the board's criteria and at the same time doesn't disturb the, you know, the other amenities and the games and whatnot that's part of that area?
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, personally, the building's a little funky, which I like. I like that. I just don't want it to look like a cage up there. So I would totally be open to enclosing it or, you know, with the hardy solution. And whatever color the hardy is, we paint the mesh same color. And if the jasmine grows, it grows as it grows. I'd be fine with that. And not have to do extra palm trees as we didn't have them put palm trees in there the first time. So, but, but the bottom of it is, is we have to have a majority for them to be able to move forward. Otherwise, this is a total quagmire. So, you know, the stairs are approved to be in a setback. That's not an issue. You know, what do we, what do we want there? I just don't think it should look like a cage. But if we can make that cabling or fencing or whatever you want to call it, go up the building and it's the same color and we don't see it and eight years later, we got a beautiful wall of jasmine, then that'd be, I think that'd be great. Joe, what do you think?
I mean, if I get the, and I don't know, Chris, we don't have the full color board in this submission, do we?
We do not. I'm sorry.
Perhaps I could pull that up quickly and share that the siding, and we provided a sample of this, was intended to be a darker stained painted, or a darker stained pine. And this would be a bronze against that. The frame itself is relatively thin. I know some of the photos in there showed post, but it's really just like a two-inch frame. And then, and then the wire mesh itself on a two-by-two grid. So it's pretty minimal, kind of disappears. When all said and done, but the, I mean, I think you would be happy with the way that the paint and the stain will work with each other.
Okay, I'm open to that. I mean, we could do this as an approval with conditions, with review by staff and one DRB member like we did the last one. But, oh, sorry, Annette, didn't see your hand up. Go ahead.
I guess if we're leaning back towards this mesh and with the concerns of the jasmine growing that tall, if the mesh just went to the top of the railing height and then, I'm just trying to come up with an idea of where it sort of, isn't just that wire to the top if we end up not getting it planting, if it then just at least shows, leaves some of the facade material exposed and then the jasmine has a better chance of making it to the top of the trellis? I don't know what people are thinking about.
Sounds like it'd be a shorter growth period, yeah.
This was a color board that I had, and this is a dark gray stained sample.
Yeah. And then the, the structure is brown, was called whatever kind of brown that was called?
It was city brown.
City brown?
Dark bronze to go with the windows and the burn slate roof.
All right. Okay. Stopping the trellis at the handrail height, good idea?
I think that, I think that could work. We actually had drawn up an alternate to that.
Okay. All right, so I mean, I want to, I want to leave you here with some direction. And then I would suggest you just withdraw, or no, don't withdraw. I think we'll get Annette to make a motion and then you redraw it, send it to Chris and we'll do it. And this is a suggestion. This is open for discussion. We'll do it as a staff and one-member review. Okay. Anybody opposed to that? Raise your hand. Okay, I think we've, we've come to somewhat of an agreement. So, Annette, would you do us the favor of making a motion with the conditions? Provided that's what, that's what you want to do, not twisting your arm.
So, you're recommending the same vertical siding that is on the entry element, same color as the entry element with a trellis in the bronze that extends only to the top of the handrail with the jasmine planting. That concludes the motion.
And for, can you throw in the part about for review by staff and one member?
Sorry, yes, for review by staff and one member.
All right. Any further discussion on the motion? All right, may I have a second? Oh, wait, was that further discussion, Judd?
Sorry, obviously, since Pat did update the planting plan, I would just specify at least three-gallon jasmine. And, I mean, I'd specify as many plants as they're willing to get just to get it going. Just because it's gonna take a while for that to fill up. So I would say is they probably want to go with at least three-gallon jasmine. And I would say at least four to five plants total.
Okay. Annette, would you like to add that to your motion?
Sure, I'll amend my motion that it should be three-gallon jasmine and a minimum of four plants, five preferred.
Okay. Any other discussion? All right, now, may I have, anyone like to make a second?
I'll second.
A second by Mr. McAllister, okay? And as you are called on roll, please vote yes or no. Teresa?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ms. Lippert?
Yes.
Mr. McAllister?
Yes.
Ms. Remke?
Yes.
Mr. Molesky?
Yes.
Mr. Carstens?
Yeah.
Mr. Gentiman?
Yes. Passes unanimously, approval with conditions. All right, so, thanks, thanks, Joe and Jerry for your input. And you guys may log out at your convenience.
All right, thank you. Have a good weekend.
Bye-bye. Okay, we, what we got? Sorry, I'm getting, getting my papers. When I get to the end, my papers get mixed up. All right, so now we're on to signage. Purple Cow DRB 00159-2020. And I believe Shay will take over from here.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is Shay Farrar with the Community Development Department. This application is for the modification of the sign located at 24 Palmetto Bay Road, adjacent to the Bridge Shops. This will be for a new location for the Purple Cow. The proposed sign design incorporates the standard logo colors for this business. The proposed background color is Sherwin-Williams 7063 Nebulous White with a 1.75-inch border in Sherwin-Williams 9565 Forged Steel. The proposed logo is comprised of these colors along with Sherwin-Williams 6982 African Violet. The smaller copy on the sign would be Sherwin-Williams Forged Steel with the business name being Sherwin-Williams African Violet. Staff recognizes the desire of the business to utilize its standard sign colors. However, the proposed Sherwin-Williams Nebulous White results in a high contrast with the other proposed colors. With a darker background color, staff would support the approval of the logo purple as a limited accent on the sign. Staff recommends approval of the application with the following conditions. One, the background color of the sign be Sherwin-Williams 6198 Sensible Hue or Sherwin-Williams 6199 Rare Gray, which are both slightly darker. Two, the column caps and bases are painted to match the background color of the sign. And three, the color of the copy for the business name be Sherwin-Williams Forged Steel. And that concludes staff's presentation and recommendations. This is the location of the property along Palmetto Bay Road and it's on the same parcel as the Bridge Shops. And the proposed specifications for the sign. Are there any questions?
Yep, none for me. We'll go through everybody here. Is that, is that the presentation, Shay?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Is the, is there applicant present?
I'm here too, yeah. I just realized that we were up.
Okay, if you could please identify yourself.
I'm Pamela Woods from Hilton Head Signs.
Thank you. Anything you'd like to add?
I'm from the Purple Cow.
Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry, didn't mean to cut you off. Okay, so we have Pamela.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Two people back there. Would either of you like to add anything to Shay's narrative?
I didn't. Sorry, I didn't hear Shay, what Shay said, so if you could.
He said.
Did you get a, let me find the?
I read the comments, so I just, I didn't, I don't, I don't know where we are in the process. I apologize. It's kind of, it's difficult to keep track of what's going on under certain.
Shay had just read the comments and the approval with conditions, which were the background color of the sign be Sherwin-Williams Sensible Hue or Rare Gray. The column caps and bases are painted to match the background color. And the color of the copy for the business name be Sherwin-Williams Forged Steel. You have any comment or questions regarding the staff? Comments to the applicant, sorry?
Bernie, have you spoken for yourself yet?
Nope, I haven't been called on yet.
No, the floor is open to either of you, so.
Okay, so this is Lisa Burnstein. Everyone calls me Burn. For obvious reasons, I want the Purple Cow to be in purple because it's the Purple Cow. I don't think that that color purple is outrageous or too bright. I think it is aesthetically pleasing. And I think that it definitely, you know, supports the town. I, you know, I'm totally in agreement that, you know, the gray is the gray and whatever. But I do believe that the Purple Cow should be in purple. There's red signs, blue signs, green signs all over the island. I don't think that the purple in my Purple Cow will upset that in any way, shape or form.
Shay, correct me if I'm wrong, but is not, aren't you suggesting the purple is okay?
Um, I believe the purple as an accent color is acceptable.
So the cow and the word purple cow?
Well, I had recommended that the primary copy be the forged steel.
The primary copy, so that would be the word for us, for us laypeople. That's the purple, the word the purple cow on the sign. What color is staff recommending that?
Staff is recommending that, that all of the copy on the sign be Sherwin-Williams Forged Steel. The applicant is requesting that the purple cow remain in the purple as they proposed in their submit.
Okay. And the cow itself, the character, the cow itself would be purple?
Yes, sir. Staff is not requesting any modification to the logo.
Okay, all right.
There you go.
Okay. All right, so would the applicant like to add any, anything further before I go to the board? to the board?
Bernie, do you want to say something?
No, I'm good. I would like the Purple Cow to be in purple.
Yeah, and the only thing that I'll say is, you know, I think that when we, we look at the old sign where the juice and the java and all of that green, there was a lot going on there in the old sign on the left that we're replacing now. Are you all seeing that? So, I mean, to me, what, what we're asking for is actually more harmonious than what was there and approved and not any more of a, there's less colors and it's just one color that, that is really a big part of the business owner's identity without, you know, violating Hilton Head standards, I think, in any way. So that's just my, my adding that.
Yeah, we, we've had, we've come across this before with, I think the last one was the pink pineapple. If that's the correct name, I think that was the correct name. So this, this is, this has been a point of discussion, so when you have the color in the name of your store. So let's go to the board and give everybody a run at this. If Pamela and Bernie could please stand by for any questions. Judd, you're first up on this. Judd Carstens?
All right. Thank you, Chairman. I, personally, I have, considering the contrast and the proposed background color change by staff, I'm actually fine with the Purple Cow remaining in the African Violet. I was, I was trying to look at maybe not going so dark with the proposed change of colors. I was trying to actually think about just backing off the nebulous a little bit, but if, if, if the background color is going to go to one of those, to go to the Sensible Hue or the Rare Gray, I'm, I'm more in favor of the purple thing the way it is. Now, if, if the background was a lighter color, maybe, but still, I think there's enough contrast between the Purple Cow and the background and not needing it to be consistent with the coffees and confections label. So I'm in favor of staff's recommendation to change the background color, maybe to a darker hue, but keeping the text the same.
All right, great comment. Annette?
I'm gonna second what Judge has said.
Okay, thank you. David?
Yeah, I'm basically on board with what Judge has said. I think the sign looks fine, looks great. I'm good with the purple. I would just like to see the background color be a little bit darker. The sample and the light reads kind of as white, so that's, that's my only comment.
Okay, thank you, David. Deb, Ms. Remke, Debbie?
I'm also in favor with the previous comments.
Thank you. Mr. Malewski?
I agree as well. Keep the Purple Cow text in purple and make the background color one of those, you know, slightly light gray shades. All right, thank you.
All right, I think we got a pretty good solution here. I don't think, Chris, excuse me, not Chris, Shay, do you have anything to add further?
No, sir.
Okay. I'm gonna go ahead and make the motion because I think we're all pretty consistent on this regarding the Purple Cow DRB 001597-2020, approval with conditions. I thought I had this in line here. The background color of the sign to be Sherwin-Williams 6198 Sensible Hue or Sherwin-Williams 6199 Rare Gray. The column caps and bases are to be painted to match the background color and the color of the copy for the business name, specifically the words the Purple Cow, may remain in purple and the cow character as submitted with the purple body and the gray shorts or dark colored shorts. Apron, oh, thank you. Can I amend my emotion to say that's an apron? That would make more sense. So I think, I think everybody will come out happy on this one. Motion, end of motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
A second by Mr. McAllister. And so Teresa, would you go through, roll please?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Ms. Lippert?
Yes.
Mr. McAllister?
Yes.
Ms. Remke?
Yes.
Mr. Malewski?
Yes.
Mr. Carstens?
Yeah.
Mr. Gentiman?
Yes, approval is unanimous with conditions. Thank you, and you all may log out now. Thank you for hanging in there.
Thank you. Have a wonderful day.
Bye. All right, is there nothing else? Yes.
Mr. Chairman, before you, before everybody starts logging off, could I, and I might be out of order, so my apologies.
Oh, you're always out of order.
Could I remind everybody that the next meeting is Tuesday, September 8th? We have been given the go ahead to go back to a, to our regularly scheduled deadlines and meeting dates. We will be at the same bat time, same bat channel, so 1:15, and there will be two in the month, but we will be on a virtual, we will continue the virtual format.
Okay. All right, everybody put that on your calendar, please. And we don't have any board business or anything. Was that on the agenda? No?
We do not.
Okay. All right then, everybody. Have a great weekend. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, everybody.